All right. Good afternoon, folks, or good evening to, uh, Town Council's first meeting of, of the new year, Thursday, January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we do have, uh, a full house tonight, so we are good to go. Uh, I'd like to call it order, quorum established. If I can get everybody to stand up and, uh, face the flag and please follow me in the Pledge of Legions.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
Thank you. All righty, we've got, uh, a few items on the agenda tonight to go over. Uh, first of all, I would like to, uh, welcome the new duly elected, uh, council members, uh, to their, uh, four-year term, and also we have one of them that is at a two-year, two-year term. Two of them are previous council members from, uh, last session, uh, Gene Davis and, uh, Randy Hegman. And, uh, then we have two newer faces who are not strangers to council by no means. Uh, we have a Dan Webb, and, uh, we have David Stork, who, uh, was once mayor of the town. So, uh, I'd like you all to welcome your new council members. And moving on, we have an agenda, a new agenda that, uh, has been presented. The need council to look over and vote if they want to accept this new agenda.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept the new agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I have the first by, uh, second by, second by, uh, Arthur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. The new agenda is, now, things won't be in, in number sequence, so pay attention. I think after the third one, when you hit four, uh, I think everything else after that would be different. So the numbering system will be out of order. Uh, one thing we, I do want to add onto the agenda, uh, and I guess we'll put it down into sixteen under new business. Uh, we have a, uh, letter of resignation that we need to, uh, deal with, so add that on the very last item for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, we, we just amended the agenda, that would require another motion.
Yes. Uh-
Actually, the mo- the agenda hasn't been adopted yet, so you just want to make it-
We just voted on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did, so Jeff, you're right.
Okay.
Uh, so, we need to add this to item number sixteen. The resignation letter of Allison, the town manager, do, uh, all in favor say aye? I'm sorry, make a motion, please.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
All right, I got a motion by, uh, Randy, second. Hearing none, it's not added to the agenda, moving on. Item number one. Work session and meeting schedule. On the new packet agenda in front of you is the complete work schedule and regular meeting for next year.
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, I looked into things, and, and, um, removing the July meeting would be contrary to the last, uh, our online records only go back to twenty fifteen, but we have not, we've had a July meeting every year since at least twenty fifteen.
Yes, we have.
So why the need to remove that now?
Well, because we, normally in July, we don't have a lot to talk about, everything has been handled since the budget. I'm sorry. It's right at, it's right at fourth of July, uh, we normally don't have a lot to talk about in July, and the county also doesn't even have one in July, they, they blocked that one off, so that's the only reason. If we find necessary down the road that we need to add, we can always add it in.
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to remove it, I, I personally would approach it the other direction. Um, I, I, you are right, county always cancels theirs, and usually they, uh, remove their November meeting as well. But some of the other localities that I, uh, interface with, they intentionally leave the July meeting on to wait until it gets closer to see if there is any business to attend to, and then they remove it. Oftentimes, they do, uh, but again, we have not removed ours in, in what, seven, eight years? So, that, that's just where I was leaning on this one.
That's no problem.
I would like to agree with Jeff, um, I'm not sure why, even given our comments in our work session, why we would want to dismiss any meetings, because we don't know what's going to happen within the next couple of months. Um, I, I mean, if you, if for some reason someone cannot attend, that's why we have call-in, we have Zoom, uh, whatever else, but I'm not inclined to delete it.
I got a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In regards to item number three, are we gonna stand back up the committees that we had prior that we abolished?
No, I think that's pointing to the Planning Commission.
Okay. I, I just didn't know, because of past times, if that was like streets and sidewalks and utilities committee appointments and such, I just wanted clarification.
No, yeah, that's just Planning Commission.
Uh, no, the, that's for anything that you'd like to add, um, that the mayor's responsible for, uh, appointments. I just, it's a placeholder, if you have none, then that's fine. The Planning Commission is, uh, adopted by town, approved by town council, and that's later in the agenda. So number three is for you to appoint. Subcommittees.
Mr. Mayor, the only reason why I was asking is because, uh, that would fall in with the meeting schedule that we had prior, if we had committees in the work sessions, we hadn't traditionally had the work sessions before the meeting because we had subcommittees.
And, and it doesn't keep council from applying in committee if they deem necessary, they want to have a couple people look into something like we had them looking into the playgrounds. So, but I think you've seen dealing with the work sessions now, how they work better when everybody's communicating and working on them, instead of having two people at a time, then you gotta rehash it all back out again. But if you still want to do committees, at any time we're in a work session, you can still, you know, get a couple people on a committee. Uh, uh, so, we're on the, uh, agenda for the, uh, meetings, if you want to divert back and add in Julys, then that's no problem. You can always cancel it later. So, just looking for a motion. Because we have to adopt some schedule regardless.
All right, well, in lieu of any further discussion, well, even just to get to discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, um, adopt the, the meeting schedule with the July meeting, um, is, is there an ask presented somewhere that I could speak to for this? How, how should I word that, Andrea? I, I have this revised one in front of me, do we have another one that I can?
Is there, is there a motion to approve the schedule of meetings for the first, first Thursday of every month, with the regular meeting starting at seven o'clock and the work session starting at five o'clock?
So move, thank you.
I got a motion by Jeff, do I have a second? Second by Arthur?
Second. That's with the addition of the July six meeting, understood.
Right, yes, yeah, that's why we said every month, okay. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries, hundred percent. Moving on, number two. Uh, when I first came mayor, I appointed a vice mayor for the term of two years. That two years is up, so tonight, uh, we need to elect a vice mayor for the next two years. Uh, so anybody have any nominees they want to put on the floor? Okay, I have Valerie Coyle. Do I have a second? I got a second by Jeff. Uh, I'll do a roll call, oh, any discussion first of all? All right, do a roll call, Gene? Uh, Jeff? Dan?
Yes.
Valerie, up, yeah? Yes? Uh-
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
All right. Welcome back, Valerie.
I appreciate the confidence, everyone, uh, thank you.
You're welcome. The last two years of working with you was wonderful, and next year is going to be the same. I'll try not to miss no more, uh, in any meetings, so you gotta oversee any, so. Uh, let's see. Number three. Y'all want to look at that, or just keep it, like we said, uh, you can appoint committee anytime you want? Like, if you want somebody looking over the finances, all you gotta do is you can get a couple people to, to head that up and do it and report back at the work sessions.
Yeah, that, that's your section there, Mr. Mayor, if you don't have any appointments, we're good.
I don't have any. All right. Um, number four. Reappointment of ex-office CEO member to Planning Commission. Now, I take it this is the, uh, Planning Commission deal that I had, uh, assigned you to, Jeff?
I think Allison was going to speak to this one.
Um, the last appointment was two years ago, in January of twenty twenty-one, where Mr. Voight, um, helped, uh, he assisted the Planning Commission with, um, preparing, um, Conference of Plan Updates and Land Use Map. Uh, he has the ability to do that, and, um, he is, he, he's proven himself to be very capable and extremely helpful. So, um, we are adding, we are doing additional Conference of Plan Update work, as well as ordinance work, and so the idea is to reappoint Mr. Voight to assist with, with, um, that update. I so move, we do that.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Davis, a second by Arthur. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is that a voting position on Planning Commission?
No, it's not, it's just as a, I, I originally asked him to stay on it when we were heavy into the comp plan, because he was already into it, so just to give him a, a, you know, keep the Planning Commission up to date on what was going on. Uh, and so I guess Allison just seems a necessary reason to extend it on because of his knowledge and stuff. But no, it's not a vote. Anybody else? All in favor say aye? Opposed, nay? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the no delegations, uh, open up public comment. I'd like, anybody at this time would like to speak to council, please come on up to the podium, state your name and your address, and they'll give you three minutes. Public comments open.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, guess I'm up there now. Welcome new council members too, and welcome back. Uh, I thank the police chief for everything he does for the town, for the citizens and everybody, he does a great job. But I, I think what I'm gonna address is a VDOT responsibility, so y'all have to answer my questions if I'm wrong, because I don't know, but I think it is. Those crosswalks that were placed up there across the street, specifically at the Dollar General area, and I don't know where else, that's a VDOT responsibility, I believe. People in this town and out of town people never stop for pedestrians up there, being me, it is awful. I think safety with VDOT needs to be addressed with the town. I've been to the Dollar General twice in the last couple of weeks, I was two or three car lengths back, I walked up to the crosswalk, nobody even stopped for me to go cross that street. I just can't believe people, I believe people have gone to aggressive driving recently. And also on South Main, I can hardly get in and out of my driveway. One day I sat there and counted seventeen vehicles, and I could not get out of my driveway. So I think there's a little bit of an issue on South Main too, especially on Sunday morning when all the churches are in. I walk to church, so I don't have to take the car ride. But one year, my husband actually got hit there, trying to go out of our driveway, make that left turn. The vision is terrible too, right there, on that, on our driveway, trying to see, and on Sundays, it is especially bad. But I really do think safety needs to be addressed in the town, people are not paying any attention to citizens, and I think VDOT needs to look into that.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to Ms. Cannon?
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. VDOT, um, responds much better usually to citizens.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And so, we are happy to talk to them, but it would also be a good idea if you called.
Could staff give me the contact person's name, and, and don't tell me Kyle Bates, because I don't get no response from him.
No, uh, there is somebody who's taken over the position in the last year or two, is very responsive.
Okay, could I have that information?
Yes.
And also in reference to Kyle Bates, it was either March twenty or March twenty-one, I've been to the council before, but this, I talked to someone, and Josh, I don't know that you know this or not, how long, I don't remember this before you came. I've talked about no stormwater drains there in that block where my, where we are, from Milford down to Maury, there are no stormwater drains. That hard rain we had a couple weeks ago, David, this is right down from you, it starts past your parking lot, there was six to eight feet of water there in my driveway, and it couldn't go anywhere, it was up to the sidewalk, come over in my yard, there's no stormwater drains in that block, we need stormwater drains in that block, at least get VDOT. Anyway, they came there one time and met with me, I talked to them, never seen nobody since. VDOT rep, that was, never seen another person since. But water does stand there, and I really believe if it was some stormwater drains like it's in other places on the main street, it would certainly help that water that's backed up right there. All right, thank you so much, and y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Bonnie, Happy New Year. Anybody else like to speak with council, come on up?
Good evening. I'm Ms. Harvey, I'm in the Maury Heights section. Um, my concern is still the water bill. Um, it's not consistent, you can say it's due on the first, and then it's due on the seventh, the next, the next time. Um, we don't get a grace period, so, um, it, I would appreciate it if they can give a consistent bill instead, if they're not gonna, um, give a grace period. Because it's not fair to us, we're paying more, and I understand y'all pay taxes, that's not our fault. But we're, we're, I'm get, we're, I feel like we're getting punished for, for that. And it's, it's, it's just ridiculous. I don't even use thirty-five hundred gallons of water, and I'm getting billed almost two hundred dollars. When it go up next year, this year again, I will be over two hundred dollars, and it's more than my light bill. Thank you, y'all have a good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Happy New Year to you as well. Anybody else? Second call. Seeing nobody coming up. Public comments is closed, moving on to staff reports. Uh, first we have, uh, Sandtech, water supply planning update. You want to start off with this staff, or?
Mr. Mayor, this is a, um, update on, um, on StanTech, StanTech's work, we hired StanTech as a consultant a few months ago, and so this is their first report back to council.
Good evening, everybody, um, do you want to press? I have a few, uh, documents to share here to help our discussion. Are there enough?
And you say your name is?
My name is Bryant Mountainjoy, I'm a hydrogeologist with StanTech. Um, thank you, everybody, and good evening, and, um, good to see you again, who I've spoken to before, and good to see new faces as well. Um, like Allison said, we were brought on to help assist with the, uh, groundwater withdrawal permits, um, and the water supply, uh, system that you have in place here. Um, a little bit of background on, um, why we got involved here. Uh, the town has a groundwater withdrawal permit through the State Department of Environmental Quality, um, which, uh, has a limits to it in terms of annual and monthly withdrawal. Um, the one of most concerned at this, at the moment, is the annual limit. Uh, your water use has been trending up in recent years due to, um, developments, which is great for the town, um, but there is a cap on your current groundwater withdrawal limit of, uh, sixty-nine million, five-hundred-and-twenty thousand gallons per year. Um, you're starting to approach that limit, um, on this big table here, uh, some historic groundwater production data from twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-two. Um, that third to last column there shows your annual groundwater production, um, and you can see it trending upward, and that far right column shows you the percent of your current annual permit that you're using. Um, so there are several numbers in there that are exceeding eighty percent of your current annual withdrawal limit. Um, and just for a graphical representation, there's also a graph in here that shows the last five years of groundwater usage just with a simple linear trend projecting into the future. This doesn't take into account any specific developments, it's just if developments and growth in your water system were to continue as usual, it shows what you might expect to have happen a few, next few years. So, this shows that if, if nothing changed, just your current rate of growth continued, you would start approaching that permit limit by about twenty-twenty-eight or so. And before then, if there's significant development that occurs out of the norm, um, or there's a year that just has higher than normal water usage, there's a chance you might exceed that, uh, withdrawal limit from DEQ. So, the options that are available, uh, that we were asked to evaluate were, one being, is it possible to get a higher groundwater withdrawal limit from DEQ? Um, in a lot of ways, that's the simplest thing to do, uh, you already have a groundwater withdrawal permit, you've already got infrastructure built around using groundwater. Other options would be, uh, other water sources, so potentially other aquifers. Right now, the aquifer you're pulling water from, um, is the Potomac Aquifer, which is the most widely-used aquifer and good quality in, in Virginia coastal plain. Uh, but there are other aquifers that are available that might be less critical in terms of DEQ's evaluation. Um, so we looked into other aquifers as well, um, and also surface water. Uh, DEQ tends to push people towards using surface water sources as much as possible, because they are, in the long term, generally more sustainable than groundwater sources. Um, so we also took a look into some of those options. I guess first, let's give a quick background on the DEQ's groundwater withdrawal permitting program, and, um, without going into great detail, I'll focus on their, what's called their technical evaluation, um, which is a groundwater modeling, um, approach to showing what, uh, simulated withdrawal is going to, um, how it's going to affect the aquifer system and other groundwater users nearby, um, or across the Virginia coastal plain. Um, and what that does, you evaluate two main criteria, they evaluate what's called a critical surface, um, which is, uh, point which represents eighty percent of the distance from land surface to an aquifer top. So it's like a buffer area, where DEQ does not want you to cause more drawdown than that eighty percent number. Anywhere where there's predicted to be that much drawdown, DEQ does not allow additional groundwater use. Um, the other factor there is what's called an area of impact, which is the simulated one-foot drawdown contour. So everywhere within this area of impact, you are simulated to cause one foot or more of drawdown. If that area of impact intersects any of these critical areas, or creates new critical areas within it, technically DEQ cannot issue a new permit or issue a, um, permit for a greater amount than you currently have, if you are a public water spy like you are. So, we ran the same model that DEQ has, um, with three different withdrawal rates, to try to figure out what, um, availability your system has for growth, um, with your current well field and the current aquifers that it's, that it's in. I'll make one disclaimer here, that these, um, this map that shows your, uh, the simulation results is in a draft form, because DEQ has just updated their groundwater model files for the, um, upcoming calendar year. Um, and we've not had a chance to incorporate those into our system yet, um, so these will have to be confirmed in the next couple of weeks with the new model files. But, that said, we're not expecting any significant differences. But there will have to be an update to this. Um, so this map is showing those three simulations, the inner circle, well, simp, what resembles a circle, uh, that reddish color, um, is your area of impact with your current groundwater withdrawal limit, which is about sixty-nine million gallons per year. And you can see, as you increase the rate, the green on the outside, the middle, is a hundred million gallons per year, and the blue outer area of impact is a hundred-and-fifty million gallons per year simulation. The only simulation that created or intersected any of these critical areas was the one-hundred-and-fifty million gallons per year simulation, which means somewhere between the one-hundred million gallons per year and the one-hundred-and-fifty million gallons per year is your, you know, quote-unquote magic number of the maximum amount of water that you would be able to withdraw while being in compliance with the DEQ's, uh, groundwater withdrawal regulations. So, there, based on this evaluation alone, there is some, uh, room for growth in your groundwater system. Um, there were some, some, um, nervous, uh, thoughts of DEQ about this system and being in proximity to some critical areas, um, whether you'd be able to expand this permit, uh, limit very much, um, but that was only based on a single, uh, simulation. So we ran three of these, and you can see, you can start creeping up a little bit higher, while still not creating any impacts that DEQ would consider to be, um, you know, not, not, make them unable to issue you a permit. So, that is, generally speaking, good news, um, we'll have to run the updated model simulation with, uh, probably pick a number somewhere between a hundred and a hundred-and-fifty to help get, um, zone, zone in on what that's actual number might be, that could be the maximum number that you'd be able to get. But in general, that's, that's good news, it means that there's some room for growth in your groundwater withdrawal permit. That said, DEQ will still push for surface water where it's available. So, there is a, I'm sure you're all aware, there is a permit application in from Caroline County for a withdrawal from the Rappahannock River, um, which have been, it's in the process of DEQ, but DEQ has, I spoke with DEQ, um, this week about several matters, including that one, um, and they're expecting to issue a response to that permit application in the next couple of weeks. So I'd recommend keeping an eye out for, um, DEQ's response to that permit application. Um, one thing to think about on that, it'll depend on what their response is, um, but, uh, if, if they come back with a request for additional information, which is likely, um, one of those requests might be, um, confirmation of the town's intent of joining that permit or not. Um, DEQ will not, will, will likely not, um, issue a permit limit for that withdrawal that's larger than what they can legally justify is what will be used. So if there's no obligation on behalf of any of the other entities like the town, um, to use that surface water withdrawal, DEQ will probably issue a lower limit, which means joining it in the future might be a little bit more difficult than joining it now.
Yeah, we have, we've already joined it, so.
Okay.
And DEQ, I think, uh, we hadn't heard anything back from them negative on our letter, so I assume they accepted it, so.
Okay.
But yeah, we've already, uh, gave our interest in it.
Okay, that's good, um, keep an eye out for that response, um, there might be some additional information coming out of DEQ in the next couple of weeks, but that's moving forward. So, next steps here, I think, like I said, um, would be to check out DEQ's new model files and confirm these results, that there is some room for growth in your groundwater withdrawal permit, at least in the short term. and confirm these results, that there is some room for growth in your groundwater withdrawal permit, at least in the short term. Um, the timing on being able to access that water from the Rappahannock River, if it happens to be, is a little bit uncertain right now. Um, so in order to make sure there is no gap there in having the water you need, um, it's probably a good idea to consider um, an early application for a new groundwater withdrawal permit. Um, the current permit expires in twenty twenty-eight, um, but you can reapply at any time. So if you applied now, um, you would start your clock over again and it'd be a fifteen-year groundwater withdrawal permit. Um, so it'll probably take DEQ a year, year, two years to process that, but from that point, it'll be a fifteen-year permit, um, which would cover you for, for, you know, fifteen years at a limit, somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty gallons per, million gallons per year ideally. So, sure.
On that, you know, we're not too sure. It's gonna fall between the two lines. So say, for instance, if they say a hundred and twenty million gallons, can we apply for that right away and get that in?
Um, that would be my next point.
And well, I mean, you gotta, we're gonna have to wait till you get the new schematic on what water's available. I understand that, but once we have that, then that, we would wanna apply for that right away then.
You would want to start the application process as soon as possible because it's, you're, there's a little bit of competition right now. Um, there are several other applications that are in the works in this region. Um, and DEQ will process those permit applications as they come in. So if someone, you know, hypothetically ten miles away is, puts in a permit application for a large withdrawal before you do, there's a chance that it would impact your ability to get a new permit. Um, so yes, you would want to start, if that's of, of interest, you would want to start it sooner rather than later to make sure you secure your spot in line, essentially.
I got a second part to that. So when they came and spoke to us, they said that when we did renew this water permit that expires in twenty-eight, that it would be subject to an alternative water source. So what is the likelihood that we increase this permit and we apply for it ahead, let's just say for ninety million? And they, are they still gonna tack on that stipulation of finding an alternative water source? Cause that's what they stated to us, that they probably weren't gonna renew it without that stipulation added into it.
We have seen that added in, um, but I will say, I don't know, we'll have to wait and see what they say on this officially. But the only, so far, the only time that I've seen that added into a permit condition is when um, your area of impact intersects one of these critical areas. So if you were in place already and um, you needed to renew your permit, but you were within a critical area, DEQ has been issuing alternate source requirements in order to reduce your impacts on the aquifer system. Um, not to say that they wouldn't do it or couldn't do it in this case, but the fact that, you know, assuming the new model files show the same thing, um, if you do not intersect critical areas with your area of impact, um, I think it's less likely. Um, that said, that would be another reason to um, keep your options open on using surface water, um, because that is an alternate source. Um, the alternate sources could be other aquifers, but it could be something as simple as connecting to the surface water system, which is, you know, that's, that's still, um, you know, that would be a easy, relatively easy thing to do compared to evaluating some of the other aquifers. So yeah, it's hard to say at this point. It's possible, but I've not seen it done for a situation like this.
Now, if I stand corrected, uh, DEQ will not look at the surface water application as a fifty-year outlook for the permit, correct?
That's correct. They process these in terms of the permit limits, which are fifteen years. Um, say, they look fifteen years in the future. I believe that that's a permit application from the Rappahannock was based on twenty thirty-five water demand numbers. Um, so if you were to, if you were to apply for a groundwater permit, um, you know, this year, you would be basing your um, the number, the withdrawal you'd request to be based on projections from fifteen years from, from now to twenty thirty-eight, if you're planning here.
Are the critical areas shown on this draft plan?
Um, the critical cells are these little yellow dots that show up right underneath the Bowling Green wells. Um, they only appear for um, the third simulation. So under the a hundred and fifty million gallon per year withdrawal, you're simulated to cause enough drawdown to create critical areas. Um, there are, I don't have a larger scale map. Um, there are many more critical cells throughout Virginia. Um, but in, closest to you, um, there are some in Fredericksburg area, um, and there are some that exist um, just south of the extent of this map.
So you're saying the critical areas are within the town?
Um, not as we stand right now. Um, if you were to.
I'm saying under the simulation.
Under the simulation for a hundred and fifty million gallons per year, um, you create these two critical cells within the town.
And are, are they within the area that we service with water?
Yes.
So why is that, why is that even a consideration if they're not using, you know, we're, the houses are not using the wells, we're supplying that water, and so if we draw that down more than a foot, you know, within the area that we're serving, why is that a consideration?
It's a, being within a service area or anyone using wa- water locally is not as much of a concern as the um, regional scale water supply. Um, so one of the things that happens if you, the eighty percent is a little bit arbitrary, but it's the safety threshold DEQ uses to avoid de-watering the aquifer. So if you think about, the coastal plain aquifers are under pressure. So this is this, the Potomac Aquifer is essentially a pressurized pipe. You put a well in it, you release some pressure, the water rises up in the well to a certain point. If you were to de-water that aquifer to the point where water goes below the top of the aquifer, some of those sediments start to compress, which means that in the long term, there's less water storage available. Once you compress those sediments, they're, they do not, you know, it's like a sponge. Once you compress them, they hold less water. Um, so if you do that at any point throughout the entire coastal plain, you've reduced the storage for, you know, everyone else who withdraws water, what, even if you're not right here local, um, it's all connected. Um, so that's why that um, threshold exists, is to protect not just the users locally, but to protect the storage of the entire aquifer system.
And does that model change if you were to relocate wells, you know, further away from the center of town?
It does. Um, the, these model cells are one-mile squares. Um, so that's as fine resolution as this model gets.
Okay.
So, um, you know, within the town, there's limited availability to move the wells more than, you know, outside. You're just looking at these squares. There's not a whole lot of room there. Um, but moving from one location to another does have an effect. Um, but yeah, I, I don't think that that's a factor here.
But it, it sounds like, you know, you think that we can probably get to about a hundred and twenty million gallons a year?
Um, from the modeling, yes. Um, there, the other piece of, of this is um, the justification. DEQ requires a very detailed written mathematical justification for the amount of water you're requesting. Um, and the more detailed you can be on your projections, the more, you know, real data you can use. You know, if there are developer agreements in place, or if, if there's any communication with business, I know some of that's confidential information, but they like to have as much hard proof as possible that this amount of water will be used. They don't like to hypothesize about growth that's not, um, you know, backed up by something. Um, so that's the other big piece there.
Okay. And, you know, the town is a very finite area. You know, we, the boundary, it's probably not gonna grow any. We do service some outside of town. So I don't see us having a tremendous amount of growth, like a, maybe a county would, where they can, cause I don't see us annexing. You know, so I feel like that hundred and twenty million may service our needs for the, the long term. I don't know. If we were to start to look at surface water options as well today, and we're showing that we are looking at those, does that help our permit?
It does. Um, so there's a section of the permit application, that's the alternate water source evaluation. Um, so, or analysis, which you do need to talk about, the other options available to you. Um, and whether you're considering them, you know, what stage you are in that process, um, that's helpful to include. Um, if there ends up being a uh, alternate source requirement added on to your permit as a condition, um, the wording of those is typically, um, you need to have a, I'm not gonna quote it exactly, but it's uh, you have to replace some or all, is usually the wording on those. Replace some or all of your withdrawal from the aquifer.
Okay.
So it's not a, you have to switch immediately. It's that you have to, over the course of the next permit term, you'd have to start developing a plan to utilize something other than groundwater. And by the end of the permit term, you would have had to make an action to be using some amount less.
And that's what you were referring to, Mark?
Yeah, that and uh, also the other options of getting piped in from the county as well. But yeah, with that permit that, that county is after, uh, I know they're talking twenty years or more on that. Some reason I had fifty in my head as far as a permit outreach, but it, it is fifteen. Uh, but I thought they would at least look at that and make that as a part of the issuing of the uh, you know, larger water grant. But uh, it seemed like it might, would help a little bit, yeah.
Now, if you're saying that we got a hundred and twenty million, we gotta stay at eighty percent. That only gives us ninety-six million.
You don't have to stay, have to stay eighty percent, but you know, generally, once you start creeping above the eighty percent of your annual limit, you know, from, just from fluctuations from year to year, um, you know, abnormal water use years, hot years, people might be irrigating a little bit, um, it starts getting to the point where, you know, you might exceed that from time to time. Um, so somewhere in the eighty, eighty-five percent range is usually where we like to recommend you target your withdrawal, just so you don't have to run up against an exceedance.
Brian, how long have we been at the sixty-nine, sixty-nine million permit level?
It was a ten-year permit, um, from two thousand eight. Um, so it'll, or sorry, two thousand eighteen, um, so it expires in twenty twenty-eight. Um, that's been your permit limit from that amount of time.
So two thousand eight?
Two thousand eighteen, sorry. Um, so that was a little bit different situation though. Um, just um, a little bit of background of that. Your previous permit was what called an existing user permit. Um, so that was a process that DEQ used to bring new, um, previously unpermitted systems into their groundwater withdrawal permit program, um, which was a simplified process that just used the highest twelve-month groundwater production data over your past, I believe, ten years. Um, so that's where your sixty-nine five hundred and twenty came from. That was your highest twelve-month groundwater usage over the past, I believe, ten years prior to that, uh, prior to twenty eighteen. Um, so that wasn't, that didn't incorporate any um, projections for growth.
Well, it seems like that sets you up for failure. I mean, if, if there's no projections for growth, they, they permit you at what highest it's been in twelve months. But what I'm asking is, if the limit was raised to sixty-nine million, what was the limit before?
There was not a limit before. Um, so that's what, that you.
That's the first limit we've ever been permitted at?
That was the first permit that the town had.
And we, we got that when?
Uh, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Yes. There was a, I, I'm not a hundred, I don't have off the top of my head where that expansion was. There was an expansion of the groundwater management area, um, which might have included the town, which is why you weren't brought into the permitting program until that recently. Um, obviously you were withdrawing water prior to that point. It was just not ma- it was just not regulated by DEQ.
Hey, a little more history question for you real quick. Um, the, the permitting process is honestly only so old, cause uh, you know, get, get the year right for me. Um, it was in, what, the mid nineties when DEQ started taking all this seriously?
That's right.
So it's not like we've had many, many decades of doing this.
Yeah, but they've been monitoring the wells since nineteen seventy, and everything has been dropping.
Yeah, but the, the part that like, uh, Mr. Webb was asking about, um, with the critical cells, it was in the nineties that DEQ basically directed and then became more involved in, in like, okay, you have a system, it's affecting your neighbor, we're gonna be more hard on you about it. That, that transpired like late nineties, so the, the more strict permits are kinda mostly since then, right?
Absolutely, and they've gotten stricter since. Um, then about two thousand nine, two thousand ten or so, they started requiring more um, information and um, long story, but yes, they did get more complicated.
So we, so the town has never gone to DEQ and asked for a higher limit?
That's correct.
That was a limit that they said that was our highest in twelve months, and that's our magic number?
That's correct. Um, so that was, it was based on your highest twelve months. Um, but I believe the town also got a twenty percent buffer added to that, um, because of um, the requirements were to have sub-meters, so either customers individually sub-metered, um, I can't remember what the other condition was, but there are, there's a couple of water conservation conditions that if you, if you met them, DEQ would give you an additional twenty percent.
Well, how, how do we know exactly how many million gallons we're drawing a year? Who, who meters that? I mean, what information do we develop that number from?
Each of the wells are metered and they're read on at least a monthly basis. Um, maybe they're read monthly or daily. So they're regularly read water meters that are reported to DEQ on a monthly basis.
And so does DEQ give any leeway to a little town like Bowling Green that, I mean, we don't have enough room to have a reservoir? We don't have any natural topography for that, and I doubt it's feasible financially for a little town like Bowling Green. I know they want us to, push us towards that, but how do they expect us to accomplish that unless we partner with the county?
That's, one of the things they do push is partnering with other municipalities. Um, interconnections to other systems is an option, um, which is, you know, pushed, um, when it's the only option. Um, so there's, that's part of the alternatives of evaluation that you have to do as part of the permit about, permit application, is look into all possible water sources and prove, you, you have to prove to DEQ that either your, your existing wells, or, you know, if you're a new permitting groundwater, for whatever reason, is the best source of water for you. You can talk about financials and that, um, but it's not the determining factor. Um, they'll consider it, but it's not the, you know, just because it's expensive is not something that DEQ typically um, uses as a reason.
Thank you.
How about, uh, how about water conservation? How do they look at that? Uh, like, uh, your toilet can only flush so much, you know, gallon flush, and your sink can only run so much, and you use tankless water heaters instead of hot water heaters, and, you know, no irrigation. How do they look at stuff like that?
As part of the new permits, you have to submit a water conservation and management plan, um, which is a standalone document that goes along with your permit application, which commits the town to doing certain things to promote water conservation. Um, so, you know, obviously all new building has to comply with the um, current regulations for water conserving, um, um, you know, pertinences. Um, so that's a given, um, but other things can include your rate structure, talking about how that promotes water conservation, you know, higher water use might incur higher, higher tier fee if that's how your rate structure works. Um, you can talk about, uh, if there are any regulation or ordinances related to irrigation. Um, some, uh, some municipalities have ordinances about, um, only irrigating during certain hours or not irrigating, um, at all. Um, so those sort of things can be mentioned. Um, and then on the, uh, on the utility side, there's also the discussion of uh, water losses from, you know, leaks within the water mains themselves. Um, what are the water losses, if they've been calculated? Um, and what can be done to limit those in terms of um, preventative maintenance? Um, yeah, identifying areas of high water loss and taking action to reduce those. Um, so there is a plan that is submitted that you're, there's, it's not a boilerplate document, so it can, um, you know, be based on real things within the town that are feasible for you to accomplish to help promote water conservation. Uh, DEQ will review that and approve it, um, but it's something that you get to prepare.
Do you have any idea what sort of production we can get out of the wells that we have today?
Um, I believe your, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe, you know, B D H had determined their capacity to be about three hundred sixty thousand gallons per day. Um, if I'm remembering that off the top of my head correctly, um, your, is that, does that sound right to you now? Okay. Um, so I think that actually adds up to just about what we think you could pass with this model simulation. Um, in terms of.
I mean, you think we could reach that with our, our current system?
You would, before you pump those wells any higher, um, you would probably want to run some testing on them to make sure, um, because I'm not sure how old those, all those wells are, um, but over time, their performance can degrade. Um, so they may or may not be able to make as much water as was tested when they were first drilled.
But you were saying three hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day?
Yeah, cause that, that comes up to a hundred and thirty million gallons.
That means I'm saying you're within that range with what we have there.
It's within that.
Okay.
It is, it's possible. Um, like I said, you'd probably want to test them before you increase the rates too much, um, or at least be monitoring the water levels and pumping rates, to make sure it's something the wells can handle.
Well, we do have one well we have to replace here pretty soon.
That was the next thing on the list. Make sure that was on your radar, that well number four is coming up for replacement.
With increasing our capacity, we would. With increasing our capacity, would, would we be now looking at DEQ coming back out and saying raising our pump, our wells up some more? Because we're getting near that threshold, the twenty percent, or do you think we'll be good?
DEQ won't make you do anything with your wells, other than well number four due to how it was constructed. It's intersecting multiple aquifers, which is not permissible. So other than that, your existing wells are fine. There's not going to be any changes to them. There's one other condition on your existing permit that I believe by twenty twenty-seven maybe, I can't remember the dates. You have to confirm your pump intake settings in your other wells, just to make sure that your pumps are set no deeper than they're allowed to be. So that's, that's a possibility that if they're not set at the right depth, they may have to be raised. I don't know if that's been done yet.
Mr. Mayor, and this is my first meeting on council, so was the contract to hire StanTech to look into this, when was that decided to be done? Just recently?
That was in the summertime, wasn't it?
And they were.
It's, it was.
Yes.
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 And they were recommended by, specifically by Joe Grist to DEQ.
Can you use your mic, Mr. Stork?
I'm sorry. Is this, are you here tonight to give us your final report, and here's your report card, or?
This is more of an update. I would like to, we'll rerun this model with the updated twenty twenty-two final model files and confirm what we're showing is accurate with the updated model files. And, you know, I think we had planned on submitting a, you know, brief technical memorandum describing what, what was done, what our recommendations are going forward, which, assuming the model results continue, you know, to show what we're talking about tonight, I think our recommendations will be as, as I discussed.
Do you think you'll have that for our next meeting? Next month?
It's, it's dependent on DEQ at this point. We are waiting to obtain some updated files from them. They gave us some about a week or two ago, but not everything we need. So I'm waiting on DEQ to provide those. So it, it's possible, yes, but I can't say for sure right now.
I, I want to answer Mr. Stork's question a little bit more. When, when we did the contract thing with them, it was a, three meetings? This is his second already. A certain amount of hours for the work and then a certain amount of actual models that they would run. I, I forget how, how many models were you gonna run?
I think it was three model simulations, but I'm gonna, like I said, I'll, I'll update.
Sure, okay, cool. But yeah, it was, it was like a package.
When, when potential development arose, and one of the biggest issues was about the water. And so we thought about water supply planning and, and writing a report, but we really wanted to get to the heart of it as quickly as possible. So we hired StanTech and the first order of businesses, can we get more well water? So now we have a general answer, and the next order of business is, okay, then what? And obviously, doing a, a new application and all of the documents that come with that would be the next, next item.
So this, does DEQ look, do they like your company's reports typically? I mean, is it, certainly, we hire them to give us a gut check, but does this, does this answer the question that was asked back in the question on development?
Yeah, so one of the things that I looked for was a company that specialized, there's all sorts of engineers, a company that specialized in water supply planning, water and sewer utilities. And, and this particular company could run the DEQ model, so we would know really quickly whether we needed to look for, whether we could move forward with a, a permit. That was the whole idea, yeah.
I'll, I'll just say, we, we do run, or not just models, but we do these groundwater withdrawal permits on a very regular basis, dozens in the last several years.
Can you help us with our process of acquiring a new permit? Not, not with just this study, but I mean, as far as the application?
Absolutely. We do that on a regular basis, prepare the full application materials. So that'll be, you know, along with our recommendations and after we finish this project up, if it's something that the town is interested in, then we can absolutely provide a proposal for that as well.
So can we start that now, or should we wait until your next modeling section?
Let me run the model again, just to make sure we're on the same, same page that we think we are now. But after that, it won't take very long, so get that next ball rolling on the application itself, and that's what it looks like we should do.
Yep, we want to be first in line.
What, what does DEQ let you ask for permit changes out of, out of sequence? I mean, like, if, if it's every ten years, can you, in the middle of it, say, hey, can we have some more?
You can, but it's what's called a major modification, which has a fee, large fee associated with it. And you also have to, it's not, you don't necessarily go through the entire application process again, but you have to thoroughly justify the amount again and pay the permit fee again. And also, at that time, things may have changed, and the aquifer might have new neighbors with large withdrawals. So it's not a, it's not a guaranteed thing to change it down the road. It's best to give it your best shot upfront, that what you think your demands are gonna be in fifteen years. It's a lot of conjecture, but, you know, as much proof as you can, it's best to get upfront.
One of the issues that arose, I had a conversation with DEQ the day that they came to speak to town council, and I said, well, we still have some water left. We still can sell some permits, thinking that, thinking that we would have enough for the development that was being proposed. And DEQ said, no, you're wrong. You don't have any water left. You've already, you, you need to reserve water for if there's a, a major drought or a, a major leak, you know, lots of problems. And he said, you've already gone over your capacity. And we did it once, then we did it again in July. We were over the capacity, the DEQ capacity. So, and they are monitoring to see if we go over, and I said, well, just one day, right? And they said, no, it, that's, that's, if it's one day, that matters. So then, then I realized that, you know, from that conversation, which was about a two-hour conversation, that we, we don't have any water, and so that started the, the ball rolling. We have enough water for the citizens today and for the very minor growth of the existing parcels in the town, but we have about eighty undeveloped parcels.
So we have enough under the current permit, but not what his report's saying?
That's exactly right. So we need more water now.
Right. So i- i- is it, I mean, so then this is, this is our first ever amount we were ever given, right? So we've, we've not been in, in this situation for the last thirty years, and we've grown and we've upped it and they've increased it. I mean, this was a starting number that DEQ gave us, right?
Right.
And how many times, so sometimes we flare up like seventy-two million, or, I mean, do we, do we go above sixty-nine million? Is that right?
You've not exceeded your annual limit. So over the past, I've got, I've only got five years of data here, but, you know, the third to last column there shows you your annual production.
Yeah.
So, you know, the most you've gotten on an annual basis is up into the eighty percent range.
Okay.
So you have not exceeded yet, but that, like, like I said, that eighty percent number is really, you know, that, that remaining fifteen, twenty percent is sort of a margin there.
What explains Allison's, the DEQ guy saying, oh, no, you have been over?
Those are individual days.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't part of that conversation. I'm not exactly sure what could have been the point there. DEQ really doesn't regulate daily water use.
So individual days, we might have individual days that are much below. So, I mean, I think the annual is the number we look at.
The annual and the monthly are the two numbers that DEQ regulates, yes. You can fluctuate on a daily basis. Obviously, you know, some days will be higher than others, but the annual and monthly are the two numbers to get written in your permit.
I'll call DEQ and ask them what they meant to clarify, since it sounds like it's monthly and annual.
Thank you.
I did check with a source at DEQ, and what I'm told is they had a department meeting today and that those new models, it was, those were talked about, so they should be available shortly.
Yes, I, I spoke with DEQ today as well, so they're coming.
But the, the most important fact I got out of that was that we really don't have any more water if we're, it's that eighty percent thing that we're, we're at, so we need to do something.
All right, and that's what we're talking about, increasing the permit. So, yeah, that's what you will hopefully get the help of StanTech. Council wishes to do all that, which I'm hearing so far, pretty good feedback and pretty good results from you so far. I mean, it seems good, where before it was, it was like dreary, just like, you know, we can't do nothing. And, but I was surprised to hear that this is our first number, and that, so that kind of makes me a little leery about the whole deal, you know? It's, you know, they come out with a number based on the amount of people we had in the town, this is what we're gonna allow you, and, you know, so, you know, how did they come up with it? So who's to say what they said was right as far as the quantity for us? You know, so it's, you know, seems a little political sometimes on it, but who knows?
This time it's up to you.
Yeah.
You get to justify your own.
Well, good. Glad to hear that then. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
Go ahead. So how, is, is the permitting process to increase the annual amount, is that something a little low county like us staff can do? Or is that something we have to hire a consultant to do the paperwork for us and file for it?
It would depend how much time your staff has available. Generally speaking, permits of this size end up having a consultant work on it just because it's a significant amount of paperwork and geologic information that needs to be put into it. Some of the very small permits that just barely meet the thresholds handle it internally.
Does your company do that type of work? Like assist?
Yes, we, we've done dozens of these permit applications for municipalities of this size and greater and smaller and everywhere in between.
A little like locality like ours doesn't have the, the, the type of staff, the amount of staff. We don't have engineers on staff, so, yeah. It would be the most helpful, and we do have money from our COVID fund.
Well, time is of essence. If they do them all the time, then I would say we need to have them help it so we can get this permit going immediately.
I guess my question, back to the initial statement that DEQ spoke to council about five, six months ago, was that we were gonna be required by DEQ to have an alternative source with that renewal that we placed from the town. So do you see them letting up on that stipulation? Or do you see them holding us true to that, that when we do, even though it's not due till twenty twenty-eight for a renewal, let's say the council's in agreement to get that done in twenty-three or twenty-four, do you see us still having to add that in, that alternative source into the renewal process?
Like, it's possible. I can't, I really, I haven't spoken to them about the alternate source specifically. But like, like I said before, I've not seen them require that for a situation like what we're modeling right now yet. Usually, it's for situations where you are causing more of an impact in your critical areas already, where that's been added on. But that said, that's a relatively new thing. Those alternate source requirements have only been showing up in the last couple of years. So it's, it's hard to say until DEQ gets their hands on the actual permit application.
So I, I guess, would, they provided us a map of critical cells when they came, and, I mean, we're in that area, but you're saying it's only for a higher withdrawal annual permit that we, you can? Sure.
So this is looking at.
The one-mile blocks? Okay.
There are layers of aquifer.
Okay.
This, the aqua aquifer is the next one higher, which is not where your well is standing. So the only way that you would have a problem with that aquifer, with those critical cells, is if you caused more than one foot of drawdown in the overlying aquifer, which you do not, according to these simulations.
Understood.
So those critical cells do not matter.
And is this one on top of the Potomac?
It is.
Okay.
If, if that is on top of the Potomac, separated by, I don't know how many feet, probably hundred, tens or a hundred feet of, you know, clay material that doesn't transmit water very well.
So it would take, what about the condition of the aqua aquifer? Any more stress on that? Could that negatively impact the Potomac aquifer?
It would have to be a lot. It would take a long time.
Okay.
I've got a question for you. Let's, let's be as optimistic as we can. Let's say you're able to run those models day after tomorrow, and you could meet our next meeting. And so then say, all right, we, we want you to run the whole application and everything. Besides the whole year or two of getting it done, what I'm curious about is, like, how, I'm, I'm gonna say the word negotiation between DEQ and you and us. So like, say, say we, we go the whole thing, the one, the one-twenty, okay? So then they run their models, and there's like, nah, one-fifteen. Can you kind of describe the, the back and forth time period of how that would go? Because they, they'd tell you one-fifteen, then you'd have to come to us, then you'd go back with something else. So be how that's gonna lengthen the time span of how long this is gonna take?
Sure. The negotiations usually come down to the justification itself. The groundwater model simulations, you know, we, we like to run these because, you know, we run it essentially the same way DEQ does. I can tell you upfront, is this gonna pass their evaluation or not? Where the negotiations come down to is how well DEQ believes you've justified the need. So if there's a lot of, the uncertainty with growth is what typically gets permit limit requests, you know, cut down a little bit. The more backup there is, the better. So developer plans, any statements of intent for various developments, or a proven track record of growth and connections, that sort of thing is very good and helps you get what you ask for. Requests that are based largely on this, you know, this twenty-acre lot is theoretically available for subdivision and can theoretically be developed on, therefore, we need this much water for this lot. That's the sort of stuff that DEQ tends to push back on. If there's things that are in writing that this is, you know, we intend this to happen, or if you have, you know, ten years of data that shows you've been increasing in your system connections consistently, that stuff that is, you know, it's justifiable. So that's usually the, the back and forth comes down to how well can we justify your need? That, it, it depends on, when DEQ comes around to doing that, it'll probably be several months after submitting an application. But once they, once they have you in the queue and start working with you, the, the back and forth happens a little bit faster. It's, you know, a matter of weeks, hopefully. But, you know, long, long term, there's, see a sense of timing here. If we, when we start the application process, it'll probably be a few months before it's submitted in completeness to DEQ. DEQ lately has been taking around twelve months, eighteen months for permit renewals. So it'll be somewhere around, you know, year and a half to two-year mark when you have a new permit.
Well, one reason that we hired this company, StanTech, is because they do have a good relationship with DEQ. So I think that it's beneficial for them to start working on the permit. We'll bring back information at the next meeting for a vote if, if that works for the town council, we'll start working on it.
I'm in favor of that. Is there like a general cost estimate on that? I'm just curious, because let's say if we move forward now in twenty-three, we're doing it five years early. So we're essentially losing that five years of the current permit to replace it. So I'm just curious, like, if it was fifty thousand dollars, we divide that by ten for ten years, but now it would be for fifty. I'm just curious for cost analysis purposes.
Sure. So DEQ's permit fee itself is nine thousand dollars, so that goes to DEQ. And then there's fees for repairing it. You know, it, it varies a little bit, but, you know, it'll be, we'll, we'll have that in writing, but it'll be somewhere in the, you know, twenty thousand this range to repair that application. It'll, it'll fluctuate a little bit depending on, you know, we, we make some assumptions, depending on how much data we get from the town and what we have to dig up on our own, it, it bounces around a little bit, but. and what we have to dig up on our own. It, it bounces around a little bit, but at small part.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have anything else for us?
I do not.
All right. Well, we sure appreciate you and all your good information and, uh, we'll wait to hear from you with a, uh, more updated official type report.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I, I do have to run now, but if there are any follow-up questions, feel free to send them my way through Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Next item, uh, public works, monthly report. Anybody have any question for Josh? Josh, do you have anything you want to tell us?
Um, the only thing I have is that, uh, leaf collection is over. Other than that, anybody have any question?
All right. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. Moving on. Police. Anybody have anything for the chief? And chief, do you have anything you want to add to council? All right.
Um-
Chief, oops, hold on.
Yeah, I just want to say to chief, thank you so much. He came to my door looking for my neighbor's information. Her daughter was in a horrific accident. She's doing extremely well and I really thank you for all the effort you made to contact her.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Town treasurer report. We don't have a treasurer, so Allison, I have the feeling if anybody's got anything to discuss on that.
I just have a couple of things on town hall rentals. Is that in there? On the town hall rental for the nonprofit dance, two hundred and fifty dollars. I happen to know that we actually paid a little bit more than two fifty, so I'm not sure why it says the fee was two fifty. We paid a total of five hundred and forty-one dollars and that included the security. So I'm not sure why it says two hundred and fifty. Town hall rental.
Do, do you know what you paid minus the security?
Pardon me?
Minus the security, do you know what you paid?
I paid two hundred and fifty for security and rental. I had a balance of a hundred and fifty plus security deposit, none of which is showing here. This is just two hundred and fifty.
I, I was thinking you meant security as in law enforcement.
Right.
Sorry, I had that backwards.
So where is the balance of the rental? No problem. I got it right here. The total was four hundred dollars. We paid two fifty, one hundred and fifty deposit, one hundred towards rental, left a balance of a hundred and fifty. We paid a hundred and forty-one dollars plus the balance on December the ninth. So I'm just trying to figure out where the three hundred and forty-one dollars that we paid on December ninth is. It's not here. How'd it be posted someplace? So if this is not correct, how do we know any of these others are correct? Or anything else that in revenue has been correct? Just, and the reason I know this is because this is my group. So if I'm being conflicted here, let me know. I just know we paid more than two hundred and fifty dollars for rental.
If the additional was paid on December ninth, it could be, we had to hold the check because, I didn't calculate in a certain amount. And so we needed, um, we needed to, I think we called your, the treasurer for the library, the friends of the library and, and, did they issue a new one or did we, did they issue a new check? I know we were-
No, we issued an additional check for thirty more dollars for the security.
So it may show up next month is what I'm-
So then I'll see next month, an extra hundred dollars on the rental?
That's my thought.
Weird to do that like that. So that's okay, because then I just, I'm just, it's confusing when we want to know exactly how much revenue we're taking in. This actually isn't a true number then. And then the people below the private event for three hundred and fifty, I don't, I'm just, it says name of user, but we don't know who that is. The three hundred and fifty is actually for the Rappahannock room. It's not for this room. I just, if we could just clean this up a little bit, I, I don't even know why we need a town council meeting on here. We're not renting the room. We are the room. So I, I just want better calculation as to how this is done. Because if I ask for where the money is posted, I'm sure not seeing it in the registers. So I'm just confused to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to, uh, town administration. Town manager, you got anything? Anybody have anything for, uh, Allison?
I don't have anything. If there's anything that, any question, I'd be happy to answer it.
All right, moving on. Uh, member comments. We do this, uh, council to take, uh, time to talk about something they've done within the last month, meeting they went to or schooling, or they have something they want to comment, um, something's going on around town or whatever. So, um, y'all have a couple of minutes here?
All right, I'll go ahead. I always have something to say. It's just feels awkward like jumping in. Well, the first thing to do is welcome our new members. Dan, David, welcome. Thanks. Thanks for coming back. Thanks for taking on a, a different role over here. I hope you enjoy it. I, uh, I moved into town just after you, uh, left the mayorial position.
I'm sorry you missed it.
From some people that I hear, it's, it's, yeah, it's, uh, too bad that I did, but, you know, I, I like Jason too, but anyway. Let me, uh, just quickly, quickly speak to, uh, those that came out. All right, Bonnie, I, I took the VDOT notes. I, I'm gonna put them in my binder full of VDOT notes. You know, we all, we all have a big list of, of things for VDOT. But, uh, like Andrea said, yeah, it, it is helpful if you can, uh, get, get ahold of them yourself and go from that angle as well. But we hope to talk to them too. Ms. Harvey, uh, you know, I've enjoyed the time to have talked to you. Um, I, I hear you with the water bills. So I, I, I will go ahead and, and, and say to, to the rest of council, as, as we're going through the budget season, one of the things that I honestly would like to take a look at is the out of town water rates. Every time that we raise the rates, it does disproportionately affect that double rate that outside of town has. So, you know, ten percent for in-town is gonna be a lot more for, for those out. So when, when one individual does have a water bill that's, that's over two hundred dollars, that, that does give me some pause. So along with that, I, I do want to, um, I, I just found it today, uh, the, the report. I, actually, Mark, I think you're the only one on council at the time when, when the USDA reps came in and, and they gave that big spiel on, on how you have to have a certain, you know, ratio of, of, of income to, uh, meet as far as like what your water rates are set as. But I, I think we really can take a look at, at that and see if, if we're anywhere close to what, what they want. I think you were speaking to that before about if we really do have to increase the rates the full ten percent again. But I, I think that the ten percent on the out of town might, might be something that's a little bit out of whack. So I do want to try to tackle that this time around. You're right. You're, because we skipped the year is fifteen, then it's gonna be fifteen again. Thanks.
Right. Yeah, but one of the things was, do we really need to, you know, with-
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to take a look at the math and see.
Yeah.
And we're early in the budget process, so we can, we can try that. Uh, but that, that's all that I, I have for right now. Thanks.
I wanted to just tack on to what Jeff was saying for you, ma'am. I, I do think that there's a minimum threshold on, we'll say, users of the, uh, water system that, like, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but if it's set at a certain gallon for every household, whether you use that or not, there's a minimum limit of gallons per month, correct? And so you're billed upon that. So whether you use it or not, it's still gonna be billed. So again, um, if there's two residents in the house and they're not using all the water, but they're still billed at that minimum threshold level. So it, one, it should stay consistent if you're not going over that. And then two, we, we've discussed in our work sessions about some, um, I would say, changes regarding around that process. So hopeful, um, we can all come together and work on that and maybe try to find a consecutive date, if that's something that's not current now, but appreciate the feedback.
I have, I have one thing.
Right, sir.
I don't see it on here, so Allison, I'm gonna direct this to you. Do we have anything for the harvest festival yet? Any numbers or anything at all?
No, we don't.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, council members. Moving on, uh, consent agendas. We have two new council members on and what we like to try to do is consent agendas. Try to vote on them as one unit, ten through thirteen. When you get your packets, it's best if you see anything wrong with them to call the town hall, talk to the girls in the office, try to get it resolved before the meeting. Because sometimes some of the things that are bought out may make us look bad or make our staff look bad. And it's something that we can easily just pick the phone up and call and check on this bill or check on the minutes or whatever. And it just also makes things go a whole lot quicker. But, uh, with that, what I'll do is I'll ask, uh, for a motion to accept the consent agendas, consent agendas as a R. Do I have a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Got a motion to accept it? Got a second by, uh, Jeff got a second by Valerie? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Hearing none. Consent agendas passes. Moving on to unfinished business. Application for sewer connection Hill Mobile Home Park. And I believe we have, uh, representative here, but staff, you want to take this on first?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, there is a request to, uh, to connect sewer to, um, Hill Mobile, Mobile Home Park. The, uh, Mobile Home Park exists outside the town boundaries. In my conversation with their representatives, there, there's two processes that they need to, that need to be approved. One is, um, approval by the Carol, Caroline County Board of Supervisors and the other is town of, um, Bowling Green Town Council for selling outside. Town manager sells inside. So, um, it is up to, to town council. This is their, the, their first stop is here. I suggested that to them. Normally I would suggest going to the county first, but in this case, I suggested, um, that, that council might have some, a, a lot more questions about it. And so to start with the town. So it's here before you tonight. Uh, they're requesting, again, connection for the entire Mobile Home Park. And their representative is here to speak.
All right, who do we have?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Who is it?
Members of town council, I'm Steve Blaine, representing Hill Mobile Home Park. With me tonight is DeAndre Singleton, who's the operations manager for, um, Homes of America, who owns this park and actually owns two other parks in, uh, Virginia and a number of mobile home communities throughout the US. And this handout just tells you a little bit about the company and gives some examples of other communities that they've acquired and been able to put more capital in and make improvements. And that's the, that's ultimately the goal with the Hill Mobile Home community is to make some improvements, upgrade it, uh, for the community. As you know, it's, as Ms. Fincham mentioned, it's located just outside the town limits off of Lakewood Road. Property is a little under ten acres. Right now we have twenty-one families living in the community. And, um, I believe eight of those, the, um, families actually own their mobile home. We have zoning that would permit additional homes, up to fifty-six units. But given the condition and the reason we're here tonight, the condition of our existing wastewater treatment plant, it's imprudent for us to add new communities. Basically, we have a VPDS permit to discharge waste into an unnamed tributary into Maricose. Is that how you pronounce it? Maricose Creek. Our plan is not, cannot comply either because of poor design or, um, it's just outdated. But the permit is still active and what the request today really is, to give the owner and the families, uh, an alternative. It may be that the most cost effective long-term is to replace the plant. But given, and I think you heard a little bit about the regulatory environment, these smaller wastewater treatment plants can't possibly be as efficient as municipal plants just by economies of scale. And you add to that the, the ongoing operations expenses, the, uh, the reporting expenses for a wastewater system to serve fifty-six families, we don't believe is really the long-term best solution. The, um, the community is, is served, uh, is served today by town water. So we, we have a meter, a single meter, uh, I think it's a new meter, uh, put in in March. These, uh, families, the average daily, uh, consumption is not more than two hundred gallons per day. Many of them do not have washer dryers, so they're not like your typical single family, which is really kind of the basis, I think, for your, we heard tonight about, uh, you know, your water bills and everything. It's kind of based on a, on a base, um, consumption. These typically are below the average consumption of other, uh, single family homes. What we would propose, if the town would agree to allow the, the connection, the connection point is really immediately adjacent to the community. There's a manhole, we understand, um, where the restaurant, this is still the New Yorker restaurant. There's a manhole literally right there. So it'd be a, a nominal, um, you know, connection. But the owner would pay for all the construction of the connecting. If a lift or a pump station is necessary, the owner would pay for that, not the town. We propose a single meter, so it'd be like supplying an apartment building. We have a single meter and then the owner's responsible for the, uh, charging individual families, which is what's being done with the water right now. And then the owner can then do its own internal inside meter if they determine to do it, um, on an actual charge basis. So, um, with that, you know, if you have questions, um, DeAndre and I are here to try and answer them. And we appreciate your, the opportunity to come before you. I, I think hearing about your long plan, long-term planning for your water supply has been very enlightening. You know, I've, I've looked at your comp plan. I've, I've read some of the minutes about, you know, the rationale for annexing this part of the town is to try and attract growth to that area. It doesn't appear that there's been a lot of growth in that area and that's possibly can change. But I guess to put our request in the perspective, we're asking for, you know, another, you know, fifty-six families living, um, in probably what's, in many rural areas, the, the only viable, affordable housing for some people. And, uh, you know, with that, we'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
How, how many, um, mobile homes are there now?
There are twenty, there are a, a few that are vacant, but there are twenty-one families who are occupying.
And, uh, zoning wise, for the county's standpoint, you could take that up to how much?
Uh, fifty-six. We have a special use permit that would allow to fix it fifty-six units.
Allison, the, um, availability, uh, the sewer availability fee, I see is twelve thousand five hundred. Is that the in-town fee or is that the out of town fee?
I'll check that for you right now, um, while we're waiting for that answer. Twelve thousand five hundred. It is both inside and outside town.
Is it the same availability?
It is the same. It is the same.
And that's based on a, excuse me, Ms. Fincham, that's based on a two-inch meter. We may need, we may not need a two-inch, but our engineers recommended that. But I think it's important that the council know that if there, if there were an individual household with a meter, you could be entitled to an availability fee of six thousand per meter. And so I just, you know, I want, you know, for a matter of transparency, um, we, we would not treat this like, you know, a single-family subdivision for reasons I've said. We'd have a single meter, which is how we do the water. That's a significant different capital outlay if we were to take fifty-six units times six thousand, obviously. We'd probably make it infeasible. But I think your, um, rate schedule can be interpreted to the availability fee that I've put in my application. You know, you can charge, you, your council can advise you, you can charge really whatever you want for your rates, but as long as you, you know, don't discriminate. But I think that the rate schedule would support what, what I put in the application.
But we don't, we don't meter sewer. We meter water and that's the amount of sewer, correct?
That, that's how most localities, I assume that's how you do it. So you already have an existing meter, we already know what the flow is, um, on the water supply.
Right.
Probably, you know, you could use, you know, assume it would be a little over double what it is now.
So you presently have twenty-one people in homes, you're licensed for twenty-seven, and the parcel you're on has an expansion of thirty. The parcel next to it, I believe, has thirty-two. Are those licensed as well? Or, or when are you planning an expansion at all?
The, the special use permit that's in, currently in effect for the entire nine acres allows fifty-six. There, there is some history where I think they started with twenty-seven, and then that, that, um, that was increased to fifty-six. But, um, you know, I, our client has only owned the park for a little over a year. I don't know why, you know, they didn't expand beyond that.
Okay.
Now, uh, you say you got twenty-one units on right now. Uh, how are we to know when you add on other units? You know, I mean, so, so I guess we would have to go on water consumption then instead of pumping.
Well, the way that they, they are calculating it, it doesn't matter because they, um, are requesting to pay one connection. I reviewed the code.
Yeah, but that's, that's one connection, but it should also be, just like with the water, they have a minimum at each unit that, that they pay us out of one meter, and then it's their responsibility to collect it from their tenants.
That's not what happens.
Well, that's why it was set up to also, have to have been done.
It never, it wasn't, um, on, my understanding was that it was on an emergency basis for the water. It happened very quickly, um, they allowed one connection, and it stayed one connection. So basically, you don't get that base rate for every single.
So what do we get?
So you get, it's like.
Two hundred dollars a month?
Yes. You get, it, 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 oh, hold on.
I was on council when all that went down, and I don't recall it being that way, even though it was emergency.
They start at the base.
They pay for whatever gallon, whatever usage they use.
It's the, it, right. It's based on the usage, so obviously with that many homes.
Okay, you're right, well, yeah, if they go over, right. But we gain more by, if it was by per household unit on one meter.
Right, that's correct. So it, it never happened to, they never separated it into different connections. So I talked to the Director of Public Works, I've reviewed the code, and both of us feel strongly that it should be an if council wants to sell su- sewer capacity to, out, outside the town, to this Mobile Home Park, that it's, that the connection is for each of the houses. That's my suggestion to you. We have, um, our capacity right now is about a hundred thousand gallons per day, uh, the usage, rather, the capacity for our system is two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, and we can expand to up to, we would expand up to four hundred and ninety thousand, without much cost. If you go to five hundred thousand, there's more, more of a cost for a system.
You said a hundred thousand a day is our current?
That's correct.
All right, um, can, can we get a, uh, average single-user amount?
Yeah, we, we also have a MOU in place with Caroline County for roughly forty to fifty thousand gallons of sewer capacity also. Is that in the hundred thousand?
No, that's, well, that's out there on the.
Yeah. Yeah. What I'm saying is the county has reserved up to forty-five thousand. Is that in the initial hundred thousand that we're speaking of now? Okay, so really and truly, the town's at a hundred and forty-five, rounded to a hundred and fifty, correct?
Uh, yes, of, of usage and capacity, I mean, uh, usage and reservation, rather.
And I think. Yeah, 'cause it's being used right now. Yeah. And I think, once they build that out, I think that, that does away with the, you know, with the value of the, in other words, they're at your limit, I think. That's right, that's right, yeah. Yeah, some, yeah, now they have to come back and renegotiate that.
Well, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Maybe it's of the town attorney. What kind of precedent are we setting? So say we get a little developer over there on the Northview property, and they say, "I'm gonna put in fifty-six homes, but I just wanna pay you twelve-five for the one connection." I want tha- I want that same deal you gave them. Now, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not saying I'm opposed to hooking these people up, 'cause I, if I remember correctly, that, that system over there, it, it's not, it's gonna fail. But what, what are we saying to our other developers, "I want that same deal"?
I, I think you are setting a precedent, and, you know, you're going, you would need to be consistent going forward.
And, and I, I know the, I understand the balance between the type of, what you, what the market will bear on that type of property and, and the renter and, and the rent, but, um, I, I worry that we're gonna have someone very shrewd come forward and say, "I want that same deal."
Yeah, and, um, as I said, we weren't present when the water arrangement was done. You know, I can speak on behalf of the client, that they'll pay, you know, whatever the user rates are, and if there's a way that, you know, we can, you know, recalculate or reformulate that to pay more on a user basis. But that's, uh, that's a far cry from, you know, a six thousand per unit, uh, capital outlay, on top of, uh, installing the lines. You know, I would, I would, you know, of course, I'm a lawyer, but I can make distinctions, um, with the single family, and that is, in fact, you, you know, you would have a meter for each family in the, in the subdivision. And you, and the, um.
But it, the way I always understood, uh, you know, your sewer plant is, that availability fee, what is that for? Well, you're buying in to that plant forever, you know, that's, you're, you're buying the capacity. And I think if we just give groups, uh, you can just, you know, I, I think this needs to really be thought about from a precedent standpoint, because, and, and I, I, I'd do the same thing if I were y'all. If I got this to, to go through, I'd have fifty-six mobile homes over there tomorrow, you know, as soon as I could develop it, if that's what they're, you know, zoned for. So to say we got twenty-four now, I can guarantee you we'd have fifty-six in no time.
Yeah, I think that's a correct observation, although, um, if the client makes the capital outlay to build a new plant, there'll be fifty-six units there.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To order to recoup the capital.
Absolutely. No, I, I hear you.
Now, uh, what kind of, uh, improvements can we look for out there with the new owners? As far as, uh, conditions, absolutely, you know, looking at the pictures here, they're talking about, you know, where they've refixed roads and other parks and stuff, and what's their?
We wanna be able to do all that, and, uh, but we have to have enough critical mass to put the investment in.
Okay, it, it needs it.
Oh, I know, we know that.
It's bad, it, you know, here, you know, here everybody talking about putting subdivisions across the road and stuff, and we got the dump over there, and it's just, you know, nothing against the people that live there, I mean, by no means, but it just, it's been not kept up all these years. I used to know the other owner, and I used to, used to supply the water to that park, you know, from the New Yorker. And, uh, I know the problems we had then with pipes freezing all the time and, you know, not being up-kept, and it, it was bad. Uh, I'd like to see it, you know, people living, you know, a little bit better situation if we're gonna provide sewer, we already gave them, you know, already got water. Uh, I think, you know, like you say, in capital investment, it needs to be improved as well if we're gonna do it.
We agree. I mean, the, the client, um, believes in first the safety and, and health of their community. That's, that's how they're gonna succeed.
Our sewer lines, they, um, they're not exactly maintained by the monthly fees. They're, the, the monthly fees are not enough to cover the breaks here and there. It, everything, the, the growth and improvement of those lines is paid for through those connection fees. We recently had to turn down a multimillion-dollar grant because we couldn't match it. Our in-town sewer system is in desperate need of upkeep. Something outside of the town limits that would undermine the, the availability of getting those connection fees, but then subsequently increasing the overall burden on that sewer system would have far more usage impact on those currently crumbling lines than would ever be paid for by the monthly fees that they would incur.
So, uh, lines you're talking about, oh, it's a brand-new line, they were just put in there a few years ago, and it's a force, it's a force fed up from the pump.
I, I don't mean that line specifically, I mean the overall system itself.
Yeah, well, it's, it's new from there all the way up to the plant. That's all one new line all the way in. So I see, I see your point as far as the cost there, contributing to the other part of it as well. Uh, but, uh, also it will even give that line some use to where we're now having to, we only got two people on the system right now, and that's it. So we have to do maintenance on the pump down there, clean the screens out and stuff, it just, you know, we even had a jam up one time down there.
You have to remember too, the lines that they're gonna be connecting to are lines that everyone in the special tax district are paying for. They have not paid for any of that, they're outside of town.
Yeah, it was supposed to set up that they were supposed to pay for that, as far as I can remember, or at least I know they paid part of it.
Well, they're, they're, they're out of town, I don't, I, at the time.
Yeah, but I think we, I think we bought them into it because of that reason, because of the new lines. I think there's, are they paying that special three oh-one tax, do you know?
I do not know that, but I would, yeah, I, that would be an important fact to know.
They are not a part of that original, uh.
Yeah, but they, they couldn't be brought in because they're not within the town limits, right? We don't have any jurisdiction over that.
I remember us, I remember us discussing it, and I think the owner agreed to do something with it. We couldn't make him, but I think to get him to, to go on with the water, I think we did something. He either paid a certain part of the back of it, or he's supposed to be paying it now, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm in favor.
We need, we need to look at that.
Yeah, I, I can, go ahead.
I'm in favor of connecting. I think it's a great thing, we need the, the flow, but I think it just needs to be done equitably. If we're gonna require that every other, uh, individual home connects, um, in town and pay that availability fee, I think that we should, you know, do it that way. I, I think I was on council when they came with the water, and I made the same argument then, I was not in favor of putting the meter the way that we did it, I didn't think it was fair, but it was an emergency time, so the town, you know, worked with them.
Just for information, of the twenty-one units, twenty-four units out there now, what is y'all's business model? Do you own the trailers, or do you just rent, the, the, does an occupant own the trailer?
Uh, we do a hybrid of both, and so there, I think there are eight that are owned, so we lease the pad, and then, um, there are thirteen on that site that we own and also lease the unit.
And are any of those new brought in since the new owner took over, or are they all existing?
I think those are all existing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, uh, my suggestion to you is that in updating the comprehensive plan, I, I know that this, this doesn't help very much for tonight, but in updating the comprehensive plan, um, that a, a build-out analysis needs to be done. We did a general build-out analysis, um, already a few months ago, but really to determine how much water in sewer is needed inside the town, what, what it is that council envisions and, eh, eh, with, 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 uh, citizens participating in a, a comp plan process, what do you envision for your town? How many, what's the density and the, the growth that you expect, um, in this town? Make sure that you have enough water and sewer in this town for inside the town limits, is my best suggestion to you. I don't think we've done enough, um, work yet to, to really know that, you know, I'd like a number to say, okay, this is how much we need, and this is how much we can sell. Because this sewer systems are expensive, they're expensive to up, upgrade, it's, it's water in sewer is expensive, as everybody's finding out, so.
We didn't even touch the sewer side on any of the build-out yet.
No, but, uh, but you ought to be able to know how much the numbers are by, by the amount of water that you're taking in right now. Uh, but back to the, what you were saying about the water, uh, you got twenty-one in there now, or twenty-four. Council signed a, uh, referendum a couple of months ago about that we can't issue no more water until we find out whether we have it or not. So there's no more can be built out in there as far as adding any more units to the, to water in there, I don't think, until such time that we have come across if we have it, and that we, you know, lift that, uh, moratorium that we put on.
That was for water.
Right, so that's for out-of-town water.
That's for water.
Right, that was for water. Sewer is, is a different, you know, different thing, you already got the units there, so I don't see any reason why we can't, couldn't service those. Uh, that's just my opinion, but the water deal, as far as y'all's adding, you know, I think gonna have a little problem with that, you know, right off the bat, as far as that goes.
That's good to know, because we're not gonna invest in a plan if we can't get the water either.
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, down the road, you, you sat there and heard the guy, you know, talking about it, so.
Yeah, and I've, I've represented and I've been involved in communities that have had fifty-year water plans, so I, I see what you're going through. I think you have got a pretty optimistic report, but that you're planning now and not waiting is, is the appropriate thing to do.
So what is, what is the life expectancy on, on your system you currently have?
I think it's dead, frankly. It, we, and part of the problem is, and it kinda goes to the point the mayor is making, it's designed for more capacity, so when you have reduced flow, you can't get the, um, fluent balanced, and so we've got that problem. And it, either because it was designed poorly, or it's outlived its useful life, it's out of compliance with the permit right now. So we have, we have an urgent decision to make.
So your, your, your presentation tonight was hoping for, um, an answer, or you just were coming here first, but you've really gotta go to the town first?
Well, the, both localities have to approve this. It seemed logical and agreed with Ms. Fincham that it's your system. You know, we, the county might be all for it, but it's your system and it's logical that it had problems with it. But from a policy standpoint, I do think the right question is, we don't wanna, I mean, residents versus non-residents, you don't want to short-change your residents for future planning. But very few localities that I know can say, "We have this much area in our locality, we're gonna need this much sewer." I mean, it's, it's kind of a guessing game. You, you have to look at the history of your growth, and have you had a consistent two percent growth over year over year, like where I live? Hopefully not. Um, and that's how you. where I live? Hopefully not. Um, and that's how you make a trend analysis and a projection, but you have to know from a policy standpoint for your constituents that you're not giving up capacity for your town, your constituents, for non-constituents. That, we understand that. Um, I think you could make that as a policy decision, help us, and then, um, I don't like the word, to use the word negotiate, but, you know, we could, um, finalize the expenditure. Um, we've already offered, you know, to do all the construction, but as a follow-up item. But I'd like to be able to take something back to the client. We also have to, you know, we would like to, like, give DEQ an update of what our plans are. But if you're not prepared to do that, we'll, you know, we'll wait till, till you're ready.
I should have asked the attorney this prior to the meeting, I apologize, but I, um, I was wondering if you can limit it to just the existing mobile homes, the connections?
Well, are we go...
Restriction in that we don't allow any more water hookups, that, that right there would limit it, until such time that we allow extra units in there to take water.
That would be a de facto...
They have one, they're already connected, so they, they actually have the ability to add more units without coming back. They have one connection that serves as many houses as... So, they, they don't need any more connections for water, and so this is just about the sewer.
I believe that we could, yes.
So, limit it to just the twenty-two, yeah.
But I guess just what Allison had stated is that they have the water connection already in place. They could add thirty more connections tomorrow.
Yeah, what's stopping them?
Well, that taxes our system.
That's right, it does. So, if, if we don't have control over it because of the one meter, then, you know, I'm, I'm for it, you know, I see the hu, the humanitarian side of it, I really do. But we've also can't put ourselves in a box of where, uh, they can go ahead and just build out, you know, and take all the water they want, you know, and, you know, up to the whole fifty-one units.
I mean, I'm not overlooking your, um, what you're saying, because there's not a meter at every trailer. There's one meter. So, if they, in order to know how much each one of them is used, I mean, we would have to have a line, and then they would still have to just separate the sewer costs, because that's how we do, at this point, the water costs. I mean, what staff was talking about was, at this point, we should make them go back and actually do the connections for the water, which then does kick in what you're saying, that we're not allowing any more connections to water at this point. So, it's a little problematic, but...
Because we have, we have a new text amendment on the floor for this place. That, that means that council can put restrictions or add guidelines on as they feel to, to, to get this to go through, you know? So, what used to be can, can, can be changed. So, if council feels that they need to put restriction on there to, until we get a better handle on this water situation and stuff, then that's what they're gonna need to do. Uh, at the same time, allow them to hook up the sewer, then, you know...
The question becomes, even if they have one meter, can we still charge them for each of the twenty houses?
Yes, that's where they used to do it.
The, the six to twelve thousand dollars that would need to be charged for, so that they were each paying a connection fee, um, but still only have one meter that reads for the entire part.
How are the townhouses, how are the townhouses being done?
I mean, you're losing a lot of money on your water.
I, I agree. How are the townhouses being done?
Is it, I don't mean to interrupt, but would it be helpful, Ms. Fincham, if maybe staff, um, brought back some specific options, maybe with limitations to the council? Yes.
That might be more productive, thank you, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to discuss this a lot farther before we make any action at all.
You want, you want to table this matter till the next month, or...
I would, I'd make a motion to table it. We've got a lot of decisions we gotta make on this.
Yes, sir, you're right, we do. I mean, not that I don't want to see it happen, I mean, but...
No, neither do I, but I mean, there's a lot of questions, and we need to get this ironed out before we do something we don't need to.
I'd give a second, since you made a motion.
I have a motion to, uh, to forward this on. Uh, you want to forward it on till the next month, Allison? Can we get something by then, or... All right, so for the, those case till February meeting, push this to February meeting, and I have a second by Arthur. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Moving on to, uh, request change of liquid limited access line at East Broadest Avenue and AP Hill Boulevard.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you continue on with that, I just wanted to disclose that I do own a, a portion of the LLC that owns the property that's making the request.
Okay, sir.
And so I'm gonna recuse myself from any discussion on the, on the matter.
All right, you're all right, you're gonna recruit yourself from discussion and vote in on the matter, okay? Thank you, sir. Uh, staff, you wanna say something first, or you want to let, uh, Mr. Webb go ahead first? Okay.
I thought you were gonna lay the groundwork for me. Um, basically, we're here to ask council for a resolution of support to move a limited access right-of-way, from the existing right-of-way to a proposed right-of-way. And this property is located between the Pizza Hut and, right, 301. So, I'll give you a little bit of history. We bought their adjoining property to this, um, to this, uh, right-of-way that existed, and we noticed there was a lot of land out there that really wasn't being used by VDOT. So, about a year ago, we approached, approached VDOT and said, hey, here is this land, we're adjoining on it, we would like to purchase it. So, after a year of dealing with them and talking, they've all agreed through their hierarchy to sell this land to us. They've had it appraised, we've agreed to buy it. So, now, they're in the process of moving the limited right-of-way, and they've requested that, uh, a part of their procedure is to have a resolution from the town, really not quite just supporting its move. I have given you a, um, a diagram. The red line, uh, it's the bigger one, the red line is existing right-of-way, and the green line would be the proposed limited access right-of-way. So, they need this resolution among all this other information that they deal with that's on this, uh, limited access con, control change process, which you all don't have to do anything with that, we don't either. So, we have prepared a resolution of support that was actually prepared by VDOT. It is not the resolution of support that was in your board package. It's one I had handed out. I don't, don't know why you didn't get it, because it was done before the last meeting, and that's the way VDOT would prefer it to be done. So, like I say, they've already agreed to sell this land at a price, they just want to move that right-of-way. Part of this process is just to get a resolution from the town, basically not opposing them moving the limited access. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions or point out anything on the map that you'd like to see. Right now, they limited access goes from the Pizza Hut all the way out to 301 and down 301 South, and they're just keeping the same limited access from the Pizza Hut along the new right-of-way, all the way out and tie it in to 301.
The reason they're moving it around there, 'cause they're saying that they really don't want any access off of East Broadest going into that property, or you just don't...
They've always said that. I don't, I really don't know. If you go back when the bypass was built, you'd have to look at the plans, but they were planning a clover leaf. It was very convoluted, and I don't remember the, but they were, in this particular area, they were proposing a, like, a clover leaf, like, configuration. Well, after it all got done, they bought the right-of-way, and they said, well, we don't want to do that, we want it just like it is now. Well, they've already bought the right-of-way, so they've come to the conclusion that, and that they don't need it, so they'd be glad to sell it.
So, they just moved their right-of-way now down to, to East Broadest and that's theirs?
Yeah, they'll move the right-of-way down to that green line.
Right, okay.
I mean, you know, it's, that, it needs to be sold to a jointing owner.
Gotcha.
That's how the process works.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for, uh, Mr. Webb?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just invited by council, because I work for Mr. Webb, that I probably should recuse myself as well.
Okay, all right. Now, anybody have any questions then, or do we make a motion?
So, what are you doing with this property?
Don't know yet. We own the adjoining land, we saw the opportunity to get more with it. We do not have a use in mind right now. Uh, you know, I think it's B to what we have there existing, and we, it's, it's a couple acres, we just said, well, this will make a nicer piece of land. So, we'll have to come back to you all with whatever we plan to do, and if we want to break that right-of-way. I don't know why it's limited access on this side of East Broadest and not on the other side, but...
Well, VDOT still owns at that green line where it ends, VDOT owns that little piece right there. Right in the, right there, VDOT still owns that little piece.
They, I don't think, I don't know if that's exactly correct, but anything that's in front of these people, they're gonna, they're gonna get the opportunity to buy that. We're not buying this whole strip.
Right.
But, but it goes back, if they don't want it, we could buy it, I think. But, we're, we're interested in, in this piece down here, but they want to get the whole right-of-way straight. So, they're gonna approach you, you all, with the Pizza Hut and all those people. Really, the same guy that's involved in here.
Right, yeah.
Well, so, wi, with the land being owned by VDOT since the bypass was put in, and I remember that, what is that land zone right now? Is it haphozoning? I mean...
I don't want to be, you all tell me. I don't know. I, I'm not sure how that works. You know, Allison?
Mr. Stork, Mr. Stork, I just want to check. You don't have any property in that area that would be influenced positively or negatively by this, do you?
Um, so, Stork Funeral Home, not myself, but Stork Funeral Home owns a lot on Cedar Lane, which, if you're looking at this map, it's a long story, but years ago, we had a family that couldn't pay for a funeral, and they traded a little lot right, I think it's this parcel right here. So, it's not, it's not adjacent to it. It's titled to Stork Funeral Home. The agreement is, if I can ever sell it, I get reimbursed for the amount of funeral, and the rest goes to the family. But if that keeps going on forever, the interest, they won't get anything back.
So, the properties in their name, you just have, like, a security interest in the amount of expenses?
Negative. That lot right there, if you look it up, is owned by Stork Funeral Service, Inc.
I see, okay.
Is that a...
Possibly, you might want to consider.
Well, I, I, well, I sold it, but I used to own the land right across from it, too, but, and then I...
Well, you don't own it anymore, right?
But I own, so, does any land in town affect this, or...
No, not any land, but if...
Right, no, I...
Every...
Well, there, there is a connection, there's a connection, and I, I'll tell you how. There is a connection.
If you have something in the immediate area that could benefit you...
We'll continue this, too.
Um, I would recommend that you consider abstaining. I'm saying possibly, yeah.
So, I, um, is it okay for staff to speak? Okay. So, uh, and I'll answer the question about zoning in a second, but the, um, evidently, this parcel was purchased by V, uh, VDOT many, many, many years ago, um, because they were going to do some improvements, um, and use this parcel of land for, they gave me the term, but it, some crossover thing. And so they decided not to do improvements at this intersection. Um, and so, the applicant approached VDOT, and VDOT does want to sell this property. They are not selling the part that's in front of Pizza Hut. Um, they want whatever's developed here, they want there to be a joint access between Pizza Hut and, and whatever is being developed. So, they're retaining, so, so the, the sale actually is, is, is along the property line, the, the Pizza Hut property line. Um, they have said that the applicant can purchase that and actually dedicate it to Pizza Hut, um, and work out a joint access agreement at the same time. Um, so, I, it, they are calling it, it is a landlocked piece of property. Um, that is the term that they're using, it's also a zoning term, and the, it creates, it's, they will not, they said, it's not just a no, it is an absolute no, that there can't be access at any time off of Route 301. But they said that in the future, that if there is a request, that they will allow, that, that they will look at. They, 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 they don't want there to be access off of Broadest, but they will look at it in that joint access, that type of joint access agreement right in front of Pizza Hut, to include that. Um, then the applicant would have to pay the difference between the value of the land as a landlocked piece of property and the value of the land with an access point. And they said it can be really substantial. They're working on one in Prince William County, and they said it's an additional five hundred thousand dollars for a small piece of land, because, a, as you can imagine, if you can't access the property, then it's not worth much, but if you can, then it becomes much more valuable. So, um, the only access point is on Cedar Lane. Cedar Lane is not, uh, is an undeveloped right, right-of-way, um, from back behind the, uh, from around, behind the gas station, um, all the way to, to this piece of land. What you're seeing in front of you is simply a diagram. So, the, really, what VDOT is, is saying, because they do want there to be a lot consolidation into, the reason that you have to be an adjacent property owner is, is because they expect a lot consolidation. So, I, the agreement was that they don't really want to wait until a decision, decision is made on the, uh, what the, what the applicant wants to use the parcel for and the zoning process, although they said, mm, that, that every day they write letters for zoning applications, which include right-of-ways. But they said, if you don't want to wait, then, um, then provide the plat, the lot consolidation plat, which they will use along with the resolution for the sale of the property, and, um, it also... And, um, it also, i- it then tells the, the town really what is happening and, and how there's going to be access. The reason that I said that, um, that your property might be part of this is because one of the options, I'm not, VDOT, VDOT didn't say this, I'm saying this, one of the options, and I've seen happen before, is that you vacate right of way, so this undeveloped piece of right of way, you can vacate it to the point that, um, where it, 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 the state maintenance stops, and then, half of the right of way is sold or given to the, to the property owners on each side. And so, it, it, it plays into, so all those property owners might be affected, um, because the, it does, the development of Cedar Lane, you do, you have to have um, frontage on a, a pu- a public street. So development of Cedar Lane has to occur in order to, um, in order to develop this property. Or, as I said, somehow, somehow there has to be another access point that, that is done right where the state maintenance is. Um, I don't know how that access would occur, you, you know, it all has to be public right of way dedicated for maintenance to VDOT, but there's a lot more, um, to development at some point. You know, many times, a developer comes and says, okay, I'm developing this road, I'm, and it hasn't been developed yet, but I'm developing this road, and this is what I'm building. Uh, but, it just depends how much council wants to know about the future of the development of this property. As far as zoning goes, and the zoning on the property, we do use a very old map, because this is all we had, Melissa and Reese looked for a map, and Reese, he looked for four years for a zoning map. This is the latest that we know that the town has. It's, it's pretty old, it doesn't have a date on it, but this is the latest map. So, it doesn't look like to me that there's a zoning on the property even back then. That really looks like to me that it's in white, it's in right of way, so at the point that this map was created, um, it looks like it was already right of way. So, it's a problem, because we don't know, that, VDOT said, it, there's, there was an underlying zoning because we purchased this property. But if no one knows what that is, it then puts the, the, I think there needs to be a zoning, to clear it up, and I guess the attorney could speak to this, but there, there needs to be a zoning, um, zoning action by the, the town council, um, with a public hearing to put a zoning classification onto this property. It's probably going to take some research, legal research, to figure out that, but, but anyway, the adjacent properties are,
B two?
B two for where that, um, that auto repair shop is, behind the Pizza Hut, and
B two and B one.
B one. Mm-hmm. It's B two and B one that are adjacent.
Hell, that's fine. We, we question the same thing, what is a zone? No big, to me, it's no big deal. We need to get ownership of it first before we can apply any zoning clarification. We don't know about an entrance. We also have a right of way coming, or, or an easement coming be- between the Pizza Hut and, um, the, the gas station. So we have access coming that way too, a deeded easement. But what you're saying, I don't know why VDOT didn't tell us everything they told you, we've been in contact with them for a year. So, uh, I'm, I'm more than happy to have a, you know, a joint entrance, like, that's what we want. You know? But we gotta do, we have to do VDOT steps, and this was the ne- they've looked at it, they said they want to sell it. That's where we are. Now they're saying for them to do it, they need to have that right of way moved, so that we actually have right from the property we already own, to get to the property. If not, it's limited access, limited access all the way around. So, that's where we are. We're trying to get that resolution, which was popped on us way after the fact that they needed this resolution.
I think that one thing that would be really helpful, um, is a, is instead of a diagram, to actually have a plat that shows meets and bounds. Since they have to do it anyway, the lot consolidation needs to occur. At least that's what VDOT is expecting. So, a di- uh, more than a diagram, just, um, there we go.
Well,
But that is, that's not, I didn't see that that included the entire parcel, maybe I am wrong.
Well, I'm, being a surveyor and engineer, I see where we need to do more survey work. But to me, that comes in the next step. Right now, they're only asking for a simple resolution that the right of way can be moved, then they can proceed on with getting this property conveyed to us.
So, I just have a question, just if you can, Mr. Rod, explain, so if we approve your resolution, we're basically approving a landlocked piece of property. So when they want to come and develop this, and the property's landlocked, do they come to council and say, you landlocked me? What happens?
We'll be only jointed. And I'm sure that we'll do a lot line adjustment when we purchase it.
Ms., um, Coyle, the matter that is before you is a, a resolution of support for what VDOT wants to do in order for them to go through their process to sell extra property to a private person. And so, um, the, there's, I don't see any responsibility for, um, in, in any way, a legal responsibility for what is created. You're simply, um, if I'm understanding what VDOT is really getting at, is they, they, I guess they want to make sure that we don't think that we need it for access or some public purpose down the road. It's not really a blessing of whatever's going to happen with it.
Yeah, I think that they're, they probably run into this instance some way else that created them problems that they weren't aware of, because they are not communicating with the local jurisdiction, so that's kind of what they're doing now. Is saying, hey, do you all have any plans for this right of way? To me, you're increasing your tax roll and encouraging business to take place there.
I'm, I'm very curious as to the insinuation, or have ever been, evidently done some, there'd been some research done on if I was an adjacent landowner. I just find that very curious. If I'm an adjacent landowner to that parcel, then so is every other piece of land I have in town. How, how am I an adjacent landowner to something I don't even touch? Can anybody explain that?
My question to you is whether you had an adjacent property n- next to this potential area of development. I wasn't saying it was, I was, I was asking.
Yeah, so, what is the definition of adjacent, touching? So, do you see, and I, I don't know what the two little white lines on. The lot that Stork Funeral Home owns, and I, you know, I'm the owner of Stork Funeral Home, so I'm not trying to, but is right here. It's immediately in front of the town's lovely storage shed.
Don't be, don't be smacking on the storage shed now.
When I, when I took, when I helped this family, I knew full well, I would, may or may not ever be able to sell this land. It is on Cedar Lane, it is hard surface right in front of my lot, so I could sell it today, I could get somebody to, sell it, somebody to build a house on. But who would build a house there? Because, look at everything around it, right? It is not adjacent, so to say that this somehow opens up Cedar Lane to my parcel...
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying from a conflict of interest standpoint.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just saying...
But if that's a conflict of interest, then the betterment of this property is also going to help my funeral home property and all the other property I have in town. I'm just a little concerned, how did, can anybody name me the adjacent lot owner to that that's closer to it? Allison?
Yeah, I have.
Can you name me the next lot owner?
Yeah, there's, actually, it's in, on your tables, the, um, there's... These aren't, and these aren't adjacent property owners, these are just...
Are you familiar with the property that the funeral home owns?
That the...
Funeral home owns?
I asked staff to, I, I listed all of these parcels, one, two, three, four, five, six, and I said, just get me the,
Okay.
Get me a, a, a list of, of anybody who owns these parcels.
Okay.
It was, whether...
What, how big a radius did you ask for?
I, I went along the, uh, along Cedar Lane and around the property that's being built. Now, that's the adjacent ones, those are the adjacent ones, around the property that, not being built, but being purchased. So the Cedar Lane is only, it's only being brought up because that will need to be developed, um, that will be, need to be improved. That's the, I, but what I, I'm still back on...
That's your assumption, that is actually not the fact.
So that's the...
I don't have an agreement with Ray, can tear down the Pizza Hut and come through there.
So, that's what I need to see.
Well, I...
That's what I need to see.
Point, excuse me, point, point of order, the, the mayor's going to the restroom, so I would say the vice mayor is running the meeting.
Alright, let's move the meeting into the restroom.
Um, what, what is that?
I just need to see, what I don't see on the, 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 um, plats that were in your packet, is I don't see where, where connection to Cedar Lane is, and the reason that connection to Cedar Lane is important, is because that is the access that I need, so I can say it's not, it's not landlocked in the sense that there is an access point to it, or lot consolidation plat, that then consolidates some of these, so there is access to the undeveloped Cedar Lane, which will need to be developed, if that's the access point that comes in an application to develop this. Like, they can either petition VDOT and pay the extra money and try to get access from Broadus, or they can develop Cedar Lane and, um, and if, it's just really hard to see. This is just, this is a diagram, this is a diagram.
Well, let, let me ask you this, and I, the only reason I'm asking is because I, I want to know what the fact is as far as my responsibility, or, you know, to recuse myself or to vote on something if it comes to a vote, because if Cedar Lane is turned into a street,
Yeah.
Okay? To supply access to this, obviously, commercial piece of property on 301 and 207, is there any thought that that would be the entrance going down Cedar Lane? I submit that anything that's done over here is going to hurt, you know, if I'm an adjacent landowner, anything that's done over here commercially is going to hurt me.
Yeah. So the problem is, the this resolution, this is about moving a line to landlock a piece of property. That's what this is all about. If, if, if you, if you, if you purchase this without moving any lines, which no, needs no resolution, but VDOT won't sell it that way, if you do, then you don't have a landlocked piece of property, because you have, you have developed right of way that you can access from with VDOT's approval. But, without, but by moving that line, that's what this is all about, is asking council to move a line to landlock a piece of property, and so as for zoning, what I want to know is, where is the access to this? Now, the attorney has said that the legal opinion is that it, it's fine to create a landlocked piece of property.
We are not creating it. It's VDOT by their actions that would be creating it formally. Right?
We would be if we adopted a resolution, correct?
Now, ca- can I say one thing?
The res- I'm sorry, the resolution is supporting VDOT, eliminating, um, part of their access area, and, and then potentially transferring it to a, a private person.
So, I, I guess the other question, you'd stated earlier that there already is a deeded or recorded easement there past the gas station, so why would this need to be changed if that access already exists?
It doesn't. So, I, I mean, what we're trying to do is take that limited access red and move it to the green, and then when they sell it, it's going to be incorporated into the parcels that we already have, which means we are going to retain whatever access we have, or we're going to retain whatever access we don't have. We're not, you know, we're not creating additional parcel that's landlocked. All we are doing is expanding and making existing parcels larger, and if those access points, according to Allison, have proper access, they have proper access, or if they don't, they don't, none of that's changing. All we are doing is expanding the size of those existing parcels, so that we um, are taking property that is within the VDOT right of way, and we're now putting it on to the, the town tax rolls.
Ms. Finch, do you think it might be possible for somebody from VDOT to be available to answer some of the questions on the part of VDOT?
I don't know. I don't know if they work nights.
I think, I think we're really blowing this all up out of proportion, to tell you the truth. I think, you know, it sounds like we're trying to tell the private individuals what they can or can't do in the town.
So the first question...
That's, that's my opinion.
Well, uh, what I'm looking at is the code. I'm just looking at the code, and I'm looking at the, and the first question I had, within thirty seconds of looking at, at the diagram, or whatever it was, was, um, was where's the access point? And, so, because that's always the first question you have, is how are you going to develop this? Are you going to develop this?
We're just trying to add it to what we have.
Right, so, what VDOT...
If we do a lot line adjustment with one lot...
So I don't understand, okay, so I don't understand what, there's not a problem.
Let's, let's, well, the, the problem...
Like, do a lot consolidation plat, and let's call it a day, and we don't have to talk about this again, if coun- I mean, it's not my decision, it's council's.
I agree.
Well, they, they, they know that, they know that they have to come back and rezonate on it, because it's, it's right now a right of way. That's the way it is owned, so we can't go through the procedures, we have to try to draw it all at one time, and all they're trying to do is buy the property, and council is trying to say, well, what are you going to do with it? What are you going to do with it? It's like, why does it matter, right now? They haven't done anything with it.
I'd say out of all the issues, minus the zoning issues around here, I've had more questions about this particular one from council than, than any, they're, they want to know what, um, what is happening on this property.
God forbid anybody else come in this town and want to do something.
Well, I don't mind doing a lot line adjustment. I'm just doing what VDOT asks to do. I cannot just something I do not own.
Right.
Ms., Mr. Mayor.
For them to proceed on, they... For them to proceed on, they, they need this resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just want to summarize to make sure that I'm correct. And Ms. Fincham, you tell me if I'm misunderstanding something. The resolution that VDOT is asking for is for us to support. So VDOT has identified how they want to do this changing of property that they own. And in order to, to do that change, to move forward it with it, VDOT has asked the town to support the reduction of the, what is it, limited access lane. That's where council's request kind of begins and ends. What you're saying, as I understand it, is that if it's supported and if VDOT effectuates the transfer, then at some point, somebody is going to want to do something with this land. And at that point, you're saying there's land with no zoning and no access. Am I, is that correct?
I'm, I'm giving the zoning answers. I'm just giving the zoning answers.
I know. But do, am I understanding you correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, I can technically probably buy it. I have relocated, but now I have a limited access around a whole piece of property.
I, I would, I haven't got my clarification I want to need, and I want to hear it from our lawyer.
Uh-uh.
What's that? What is the definition of adjacent property owner? Because if, if I'm an adjacent property owner and that's, uh, conflict of interest to speak or vote on something, I need to know it. But if I'm a, if that's adjacent, then I don't know if you still own the rest, uh, little corner up there where the, um, church is in now? I mean, that's, that's as close as mine is. What is the definition of adjacent? Okay.
Your, your mic, Andre.
Sorry, thank you. Um, adjacent generally means touching or right next door. There is some case law that defines it differently. I won't get into that. Again, the reason I keep distinguishing that this is because, um, what is before us is a resolution of support or not support. I don't know exactly where you own land, and so I wanted to ask the question. And I think that.
Well, after now that you know where I own the land.
Yes, sir.
What is your legal opinion?
I, I think that for land that is, um, a little bit removed, that a, a resolution of support is probably remote in terms of the potential for conflict of interest. That being said, it's the Commonwealth's attorney who has that authority to like bless you and say, no, it's not. I just wanted to raise the issue to your attention since I had also raised it to, uh, Mr. Hagaman.
So. Okay.
All right, so what's, uh, what's council's, uh, just kind, kind of good a motion to accept it?
I got a quick one, I'm sorry. Won't be too long.
Oh, no, here we go. Y'all want to take a break first?
This one's for Andrea mostly, uh, just going off of, of, of that one. Letter of, of support, I, I think probably like council members by moving to give that support, that, you know, puts a, a perspective on it. And so when, when, it's, it's more in yourself. It's not like on paper. But once you've sent that support, when something comes back later for whatever subsequent action, you've already given it support before. So you would think you would support it in the future too. It, it doesn't behoove you to, no. But that's why some council members would be hesitant now, because they're either unsure or maybe they don't outright like it. I personally want to get this, uh, thing built on something. I don't know what it'll be. But go, going back to the zoning question, this is currently a right of way. It would require rezoning. So I think it unfortunately butts up against the water moratorium. And so based off that, since we have that moratorium in place, we can't rezone it and then give it water. So why would I throw that support behind it now knowing that I can't give it the water? And I think that's the reason. It's, I think that's in line with the idea of, hey, what are you going to build on it? Hey, how are you going to access it? Because I want to fix that problem before I support it.
And Mr. Boyd, I, I understand what you're saying, and, um, that is why it is before council for council's discretion. I understand completely what you're saying. I understand your reasoning. Another person may not see it that way. There are no legal parameters either way. Now, if the rezoning came before you, it would be different. But I understand what you're saying.
I already have seven existing lots there already. And one of those already has water.
Well, that, that would, that, that still wouldn't come into play, even, even with the, with the, the way the moratorium's written. Uh, if you were to consolidate the lots, that would be a new parcel, which would actually contradict the moratorium and that you wouldn't. How would that even work? Because we're not doing any rezonings. How would lot consolidations work?
That's a good question.
Not creating any new lots.
I mean, I think that if, if council, some of you, I'm hearing, have questions about what will be. And you don't need, like in a rezoning, you know, you need a, a reason to vote for or against it. You don't really need a reason in this. This is sort of just discretionary. Do you like it? Do you not like it? And so if you're troubled by the unknown, that can certainly be your guiding principle. If you don't care and want to vote for it, that likewise.
All right, councils, you have a resolution of support in front of you. Do I get a, uh, a motion to accept?
What, what happens if this goes down? Like if this gets rejected, can they bring it back or?
You don't have to take any action to reject it. You only have to take action to support it. If you don't take any action.
Okay, well, I was, if, if there were a motion to deny it, what would then happen?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would they be able to bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, they could, but.
Well, I just, I want, I want to say one thing. It, 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 it is a little bit irritated me tonight, my first night on council, to have, I don't know, it was addressed by staff, and I see a little passion in it. My name brought up as an adjacent lot owner when I, I clear, it's clearly not an adjacent lot owner, a lot, lot. This, we're not talking, I, I don't know what this could be. In fact, I never knew, I thought someone owned it. I didn't know it was not a right of way. It's dead land. It's the entrance to our town. It's not going to be a subdivision. It's not going to be anything that helps my lot. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to address the issue of, I'm going to say right now that I am a little bit insulted that it was brought up that I might need to recuse myself. Because if I need to recuse myself because I own this lot way over here, then I need to recuse myself and I shouldn't have run for council because I own multiple properties in town. And I'm going to say it now. I want this town to grow. I want it to blossom. I want good stuff to come down the pike. So I do not feel like, and I don't appreciate being accused of a conflict of interest with a piece of property that doesn't even touch it. If anything is developed there, it will hurt my property. So with that being said, I make a motion that we support this resolution, we adopt this resolution as a support to pass along to VDOT.
I'll have it first by, uh, Mr. Stork. I have a second. Hearing none, no, no action is taken. Thank you.
Mr. Stork, I apologize if you feel that I insulted you. I.
I, I don't feel like you did.
That was not my intent.
I feel like there's been some talk prior to tonight about, I mean, this is the first, I mean, I didn't, I got this packet whenever. I, I've not heard about this resolution. But someone has done enough research to s, see that Stork Funeral Home, my same last name, owns this little lot way over here. So I'm just saying, it's a little frustrating, uh, but you know, I'll get over it. I, I'm not upset with you. Not at all.
I just, I'm, you know.
Yeah, I want your le, I want your legal opinion and, and then I'm going to make, I'm going to make my decisions after that. I'm just disappointed. I'm disappointed. I'm very disappointed that this is, uh, this is not a big deal as far as I'm concerned. I, I don't see it as a bad thing. I see it as a good thing. And it, and it certainly doesn't commit us to do anything. But, you know, no one seconded it. It died. So we'll leave it at that.
Okay, I just want you and all of the other members of council to know that my job is to protect you. And if I think that there's the potential for where you might do something that could negatively affect you, I, I just want to make you aware of it. And so, but if I offended you, I am truly sorry. Okay.
So to clarify, I'm thinking way far ahead.
Can we move on?
Can I take, may I speak?
Item number 16, reapportment of Lisa Gotti.
Well, thank you all. I will have to say I am extremely, extremely disappointed in this town of Oregon. It is more than, than I can really imagine that you all would take this stance on something that actually would benefit the town. Unbelievable that none of you all will stand up and help with this.
That's, that, and that's what I was trying to do.
All right, go ahead, Allison.
Is get to a resol, get to a resolution. I, and I think a lot, a lot consol, a plat with a lot consolidation that can easily be done.
Overdrive agreement.
Yeah.
I am so disappointed.
So.
What's got, Allison?
Pardon?
What you got before we move on?
I'm, I am thinking way far ahead. I'm, I'm trying to think of all the concerns that I've heard about this issue and trying to think of how can this be resolved? And so sometimes when I think way far ahead, I, I, I forget that everybody is not aware of all the things that have occurred. I'm looking, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at these things all the time. So in thinking far ahead and in trying to figure out a resolution that could be acceptable to the majority of council, my suggestion was, uh, first, I called VDOT today, tried to figure out what those issues were, tried to figure out what council might accept. And my suggestion was a lot consolidation plat or that, because maybe the applicant doesn't know what they're doing on the property yet. So when I did that, I looked at all the effects. I looked at all of Cedar Lane. Who's going to be affected? So I do apologize if this appeared like it was, and I think there was a misunderstanding between the attorney and I when the attorney saw this. And that wasn't the intent. I'm just thinking of, okay, developing Cedar Lane, if that's how they're going to access it, then, um, then, then what are the effects of that? What if they, what if they don't develop Cedar Lane and give the property and give land to all the adjacent properties? Who is it that would get that? That's, that was my intention.
No, I, I understand.
That's all.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I know you want to wrap this up, but I do understand, and I only look at, I was looking at it from a complex standpoint.
Right, I know.
But if I could offer that for council, especially those of you who have maybe not worked with Ms. Fincham, I have. She's looking at it from that standpoint because theoretically, um, one day, somebody's going to walk in. Not necessarily, you know, Mr. Webb, um, but somebody down the road who has bought it is going to come in and go, oh, I want to do blah, blah, blah. And then there'll be all these problems with the parcel. And so I think what, if I understand the way her brain works, she's trying to get ahead of it to identify all the potential issues down the road.
Well, that, to me, that is the definition of nothing will ever get done in this town. Because if we look at all the potential negatives, but I want to zone in on one thing you said. You said you've gotten a lot of comment from folks about this.
Questions.
Yeah, who, who, who knows about, I, I, who knows about this?
It's a very, it's just, it's just a request. I don't think that council has ever been, had, looked at before and they didn't understand it. So.
So council has been questioning you about this?
Mm-hmm, they, they asked questions. What is this? What is this resolution?
This was on the agenda last month.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, that, I wasn't here, but.
It was tabled because they wanted to talk about it, and so there were other things.
We were given the information for one minute before the meeting started. So yes, I made a motion to table it. Because I, I didn't have time to review any of it.
Right.
And I have questions, so.
And there was a lot on the agenda.
Here, here, here's my, my point, that something you said that I didn't quite like. You said you're trying to get ahead of it. You called VDOT today. You've known about this going on two months and VDOT just got called today. Did Dan get called about this information? Did Bill Webb get called about this information until tonight? Did you know anything about it? Okay, so it don't sound like we got ahead of it. It sounded like we were just trying to push it down. I mean, it, something like this, with council talking to you about it, the concern should have been brought up to the applicant ahead of time. Let's move on to item 16.
Mr. Mayor, I, I asked the questions I was because I do want to see this through. I would like to continue talking about it. Wait, not, not tonight, but.
Right, no, I understand it. I'm just saying Allison's comment, I think, wasn't quite justifying.
Well, we did have those other kind of pressing matters, but, okay.
All right, item 16, or whatever item it is, reapportment of Lisa Gotti, Tina Gamble, and Valerie Coyle to the planning commission. Lisa Gotti's term expired 1/23. Tina Gamble's expired 3/23. And I don't see anything on Valerie.
Turns out that, um, Ms. Coyle's, uh, term doesn't expire until July 23, so.
All right, strike, strike her off there then.
Addressed.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Lisa Gotti and, um, Tina Gamble.
I'll second that.
Second.
Well, can we have some discussion? Yep, nope. Well, I mean, have we had any, anybody else with interest? You know, in the past, we've always, you know, reached out to the public to see if anyone had interest in serving on planning commission. Just curious is, have we done that? And if we, uh, have, have we received any?
That's a good question.
Letters of interest?
I've spoke to several people. I spoke to, um, Kathy Self's daughter. She's an attorney. She said she had interest. That was five months ago. She submitted nothing. I talked to, um, Jean, your neighbor across the street, expressed interest. That was during the summer. She has submitted nothing. I talked to my neighbor Bill down the block. He is too busy. I talked to my other neighbor, uh, who just moved in about three years ago. She's a commercial developer. She has other means of things she'd like to do in the town. It's not that we have not reached out to people. It's that people are just not interested.
I know it's always a, a difficult thing trying to get people to want to serve. It always was in the past.
Absolutely, you are correct. A thousand percent.
I just wasn't sure if we, we had any applications that had been submitted.
We posted it online for a while. Um, I'm not sure if it's still posted. I can, we can check, um, and repost it. And we still need members. Um, there's not enough members right now.
Oh, we're short.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I'll make sure it gets reposted if it's not.
And.
Um, and one person said they were interested, um, but didn't, didn't follow through and give me an application. And one person said they were interested, but didn't, didn't follow through and give me an application.
And Jeff, if I can get you to add to your motion that these terms are for four years, four-year terms, please, sir.
I'm in my motion to be for a four-year term for both.
All right, and Jean, you seconded, right? Or someone, you did? Okay. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Hearing none? Carries. Uh, next thing is, uh, town attorney with the town phone system.
I said, um, I have had the occasion to call town hall every once in a while. And, um, I'm, I don't love what you get when you call. It's an immediate, I don't know, automated person. And I just wanted to ask if anybody else felt that way. And this is not a legal issue at all. It's just a kind of a friendliness, small-town issue. What do you think about maybe either mod- I don't know about the system, either modifying it or maybe going back to somebody answering the phone.
I, I think it's the best thing you, I've heard tonight. I hate calling anywhere. I remember the first time I called Union Bank and I got a automated thing. I think as small a town as we operate, we need to answer our phones. I, I don't ever call anywhere to know dial-by name directory. I don't call to get the hours of operation. I'm calling to ask a question. I think it's an excellent point, Andrea. I think it goes to our level of customer service. It's, it's what we, it's what we transmit to our customers, that we're too busy to answer the phones. I, I would love to unplug whatever that machine is and throw it down the hill. Thank you.
And that was a couple of town managers ago that did, that made that decision. I think it was like an efficiency cost-saving. I just-
Out of the world I like to live in.
It was involved in the Google change.
Microphone.
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 I agree with David a hundred percent, because it's just so impersonal. I get voicemails. I get that stuff. But this isn't about voicemail. This is like a nothing. And I don't appreciate having to ring a bell when I get inside the office or the fort. You have to ring a bell. I, I just, I'm, I'm not getting that at all. So that sounds good to me.
I'm in agreement. I agree with Valerie and David. I mean, I like to talk to somebody.
I'm in agreement the same way.
Well, although I agree, that means we really need to-
Do I hear a motion?
Get this budget thing taken care of and have the, have the staff to do it.
It means adding a staff member.
Whether that, we make the person, hold on a second, please. Hello, town hall, can you hold, please? You know, it just-
Man, I want to say something. Um, it all goes back to this. The town has grown over the years. But I'll tell you what, a few years ago, there was two ladies that ran that office. They answered the phone. They took care of everything here. What has really changed? Another hundred people moved into town, and now we can't do shit. Sorry.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, sometimes they are busy.
I'm sorry, but I do have two staff members that try to answer the phone.
Yeah.
I mean, you may get the recording occasionally, but they try to answer the phone. They, you know, I didn't know anybody ever-
When the, when the call comes in here, it goes to that automated thing first, correct?
No.
Yes.
It doesn't.
Yes, it does.
It does for me, no.
Every time I call.
It says hit one. It does. It comes in, when you call in, it says hit one to get somebody. So that's what you get. It don't go to a person right off the bat.
Okay, so we'll switch it around.
Yes, that, it does do.
It might be as simple as that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
I'm going to call tomorrow. Oh, I make a motion that we make that easy little switch so someone answers it every time, huh?
Okay, I got a motion.
I make a motion, and, and I'm going to call tomorrow afternoon.
I got a motion on the floor to put the switch on the phone system to put it to a, a human being instead of a, uh, recording right off the bat that says hit one. I got a second by Jean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, I need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn. I got a motion to adjourn first, second. I got a second by Arthur. All in favor, say aye. Nay, stay here. All right, we're good. Meeting adjourned.